I want to welcome everybody to our September 2nd workshop. We have just a couple of items on the agenda today, probably the last workshop that'll be so short on the agenda side, alternative fuels and electrifying the Pinellas County fleet, economic development, and then we're going to go, of course, do our agenda briefing. Before we get started, Barry, is there anything?
Yeah, Commissioner Seale on the line.
Oh, I didn't, I hadn't heard that.
I am.
Okay, well, good to know.
I'm here.
There's no items that require a vote, so.
Okay, we're not, we don't need to, she can participate in the conversation, do we need to vote on that? We're not, we're not.
You don't really necessarily need to do that at work sessions, you could certainly do it if you wanted to, just in an abundance of caution.
Yeah, let's, let's go ahead and, somebody make a motion, please, to have Karen, Commissioner Seale, join us in conversation. Second from Commissioner Flowers, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, you are officially able to participate, and I guess, not here, I guess Commissioner Peters will not be here today.
That's my understanding.
Might as well.
Here.
Okay, Barry, go ahead.
Good morning, Commissioners. This morning, we have, it's really exciting to bring forward a report that talks about the strategic direction for our fleet. It's a key part of our sustainability and resiliency plan, and so, as part of this, this is a complicated topic, because it's not just about alternative fuels and electric vehicles and things, but it's all the infrastructure that goes in and the long-term planning and making sure that we make good, cost-effective decisions on how we implement that. And so, as you've heard him once before, he did a great report a couple of years, a couple of months ago for us. We have Jonathan Ingram, who's with Novak Consulting, that prepared the report. Joe, did you want to introduce it? So, I asked Joe to come up, and he'll introduce the topic, but that, this is, it's a major report, they'll go through it, I have some follow-on comments in terms of direction after he goes, but I think it'll answer a lot of your questions pretty thorough.
Okay, great, welcome.
Thanks, Commissioner. Good morning, everybody. Joe Laura from Administrative Services. As Barry mentioned, a little while back, we hired Novak Rafftelis to perform an assessment of our fleet operations, which essentially is comparing our fleet operations to our peers, our peer agencies, and looking at the efficiencies of the operation, the condition of our fleet facilities, et cetera, but also included in that actual assessment was an analysis to bring, or the potential to bring in alternative-fueled vehicles, and working hand-in-hand with alternative-fueled vehicles is looking at potential consolidation of our fuel sites. So, there's a lot to present, Jonathan will be up in just a second. Before I introduce, before Jonathan does come up, though, I wanted to mention that Hank Hotty will come on after Jonathan's presentation and provide additional information regarding alternative-fueled vehicles. And I want, also wanted to introduce our Fleet Division Manager, Don Moore, you can stand up, Don, and John Neal, our Administrative Manager for Fleet Management as well. So, with that being said, Jonathan, come up.
Welcome, good to have you here today.
Thank you, good morning, I'm very happy to be with you all. Just a moment to figure out my logistics here. So, as, as, as both the county administrator and your Director of Administrative Services mentioned, you know, my name is Jonathan Ingram, I'm with Rafftelis, we are part of the Novak Consulting Group, we're part of Rafftelis, we had a merger some time ago, as you may remember me droning on about during the parks assessment, but just a couple of kind of points in terms of just, just a quick overview of our agenda today, so, you know, as, as, as your Director of Administrative Services mentioned, I'm having some technical ch, oh, it's got to be.
Some help is coming.
Some help is coming. Ah, there we go, okay, good.
Thanks, Barbara.
Yeah, I've been doing this for roughly 16 years, but I still manage to, to, to make an error just about every time we come up to present, so. So, I just want to review just at a high level, so there's a few kind of, kind of buckets that we want to talk about today, I just want to give an overview of the project, sort of what we were brought in to do, what are, what we were tasked with and the specific questions we were tasked with answering, and what our approach was, so just to understand sort of how we engage in this process, what resources we draw upon to, to reach reasonable and sort of actionable conclusions in our reports. And want to talk about this thing, those items specific to the fleet management and maintenance operation, some items specific to your fuel sites and how you, how you provide fuel to, to the vast vehicle infrastructure that you all utilize to deliver services day in, day out, and we want to talk about green fleet, right, electrification initiatives, so what does it actually look like, and sort of what's the, what are the impacts from a cost perspective, from an implementation perspective, and from an environmental perspective for, for fleet electrification within, within the county, and then, of course, questions and answers as we move through. I will say, if you have a question as we're moving through, just feel free to, feel free to chime in, I could sort of think of this as a conversation, even though we're running through, running through a PowerPoint. So, just a little bit about project purpose and approach, so, you know, again, a few different buckets, you know, one of the kind of, the primary focus is what we call an organizational review of fleet operations, and that's really looking at processes, procedures, staffing, deployment, use of technology, use of performance measurement data to inform decision-making, I'm really looking at the way that the operation is managed, how your customers experience that operation, customers being your internal departments that rely upon fleet services to deliver, to deliver services to the public, and we also looked at your fuel site locations, right, there are a number of fuel sites across the, across the county that provide different levels of serviceability to different departments and different constitutional offices, and then, of course, the cost-benefit of fleet electrification, what does that really mean, what are, what are the impacts, and, you know, based on the current environment, and what's changing, right, this is a highly dynamic kind of space, right, the electrification market, so, you know, what are the things to pay attention to and to help you all, you know, reach good policy decisions on the green fleet side of the house. So, I'll, just in terms of our project approach, we have a few different buckets, you know, one of the things that's really important for us, especially on the assessment side, is to engage heavily with the folks who are doing the work day in, day out, right, so, we spend a lot of time in, in kind of one-on-one interviews with managers and supervisors on the fleet side, the county's leadership team that's responsible for fleet, we also spent a lot of time with customer departments, we did some focus groups with those departments that utilize those services to get a sense of, you know, what, how do they experience fleet management and operations, what do they, you know, what do they see as the strengths, and what do they see as the opportunities for improvement. We then engage in a, in a pretty, pretty heavy analytical process, we try to focus as much on, on, on data analytics to reach conclusions, and compare those really to best practices in the, in the field, from a fleet management and maintenance perspective, process improvement perspective, using lean Six Sigma kind of practices, we have a number of folks, including myself, who are certified in that space, so, it's really, we kind of combine those activities to understand your operation and respect where you're coming from, but to define opportunities for improvement in a, in a constructive way. So, jumping into the, to the detail, I'll, you know, we'll spend a fair amount of time talking about the green fleet initiatives and the cost-benefit impact of that, I'll hit at a fairly high level some of the details of the fleet management and fuel site assessment. In total, we had about 22 recommendations, very specific recommendations in four different areas, the staffing and deployment, performance and data management, financial management practices, so, and fuel site assessment. What I want to be careful of is not to get too far into the weeds and, you know, too much, too much inside baseball for this kind of conversation, I want to give you a good sense of the spirit of our recommendations and where we're going, if you have questions about further detail, I'm happy to, happy to answer those questions, okay? So, staffing and deployment, right, that kind of the big question, you know, fleet, similar to many of the departments that you all, you know, have, have in the county, you know, experienced a fairly significant reduction post-recession, right, so, as, you know, your, 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 your county departments are the fleet's customers, as you all reduce the size of those departments, the impact on fleet, you know, reduced as well. So, there's been some pretty significant effort over the past, really decade, to, to change and amend operations, and one of the things that we really look at, there's a few sort of specific metrics that we pay close attention to, from a technician staffing perspective, and the first is wrench time, how much of an average, you know, employee's time is really engaged in performing maintenance work, right, there's time off for leave, there's those things that are sort of quote-unquote non-productive time, right, training time, and, and looking at the, look at the assessment of your current fleet, it's about 72% wrench time, which is, which is pretty consistent with best practice, so I would say, overall, highly, highly efficient group, pretty, pretty well organized, the staffing numbers are about right, based on the size of the fleet, based on the impact of, you know, your fleet dynamics, so, you know, a dump truck requires a certain amount of labor, a passenger car requires much less labor, right, so you have to sort of take those things into account. There's also been a pretty significant effort to contract a lot of services that, that makes sense from an operational perspective to contract, a lot of specialty work, so, what I, the way I tend to describe this is really focusing the effort of the operation on core services versus sort of, you know, specialty value-add services, so preventive maintenance, those kinds of things, whereas welding or, yes.
Question, Commissioner along.
So, as I'm listening to you, and I've gone through the report, you know, superficially, can you give us an idea of how large our fleet is, so that in context of what you're talking about, it more makes sense to me, anyway?
Sure, absolutely, sure, yeah, so there, there are about, about nearly 1,800 pieces of rolling stock, now, rolling stock is sort of a catch-all, it includes things like trailers, it includes all the small equipment that they're responsible for maintaining, in terms of vehicles, you're close to 1,000, both in terms of heavy, both in terms of heavy equipment, heavy trucks and light-duty vehicles, so that's the, kind of the size, generally the size and composition of the fleet. About 13 folks are mechanics who really dedicate, you know, specific attention to maintenance, so, so that's, that's the kind of ratio compared to, you know, vehicles to staff.
How many?
About 13 maintenance technicians.
Thank you.
You bet. So, much of that specialty work has been contracted, again, heavy focus on, on preventive work. One of, one of the opportunities is to really change and adjust the skillset and the training and certifications of your mechanics to, to better pair with the dynamic of, of the fleet, so, really what we're focusing on here is creating additional heavy equipment certifications and some additional focus in specialty training on the emergency vehicle side. There are also a number of, of sub-shops that, that are essentially satellite mechanic facilities that are housed with public works and utilities to provide a little bit enhanced customer service. There are some challenges with those, with those, with those sites, they're typically staffed with one mechanic, which there's a number of sort of safety concerns associated with that, and the division of, you know, with a, with a relatively small staff from a maintenance perspective, that division of, of personnel away from the central fleet facility creates some operational challenges as well. Those, those sub-shops were closed during the pandemic, we'd recommend that they, they remain closed, and that the departments who utilize those services access the, the central fleet shop for their maintenance, maintenance response, or maintenance requirements. We also looked at some issues on the performance and data management side, so, you know, obviously the customer perspective is really important, and what's the, what we, what we commonly hear, and this isn't, this isn't unique to this particular fleet operation, I would say it's ubiquitous, okay, so, you know, the $29 oil change at Jiffy Lube is sort of the cost comparative metric when you think about, how much does it cost to provide services? And so, we went through a process of just looking at, you know, what's the actual cost of the operation, how does it compare? You know, the parts markup, there's a few different components that roll into that, when we look, the most important is the shop labor rate, and we did a comparison, and the shop labor rate for the, for the fleet shop is lower on average than just about every other comparison in the region, so in terms of the hourly rate that's charged, it's comparatively low. Parts costs, there are a number of areas that could compare pretty favorably with, with benchmarks, so, you know, the lure of the $29 oil change doesn't quite measure out when you look at the actual cost of the operation. The real, I think the real opportunity for cost improvement, or for improvement in the space is, relates to performance measurement and data reporting, there's really, you know, I'll talk about this in a moment, but the fleet management system is a, is a good system, and the department does frankly an excellent job of utilizing it to plan their work and measure their work, but it's, it's just an old system, it's antiquated, it has limited functionality in terms of connecting with departments and providing them access to information about their vehicles, and there's really some, some need for improvement in that space. There's also an opportunity to create a little bit more diligence around specific performance measures, and reporting those performance measures as a basis of both customer satisfaction, but just as importantly, as a, as a tool for, for managing operations. The department does a great job with some court, again, that wrench time and productivity metric, right, some key metrics, but expanding that profile a bit is going, and engaging more proactively with the user departments will add some value, and I will say that's, that's already begun, when I, you know, with the, the current fleet director, I think, has, has made some pretty significant improvements in that space, even from the point before we actually started the project, so, so that's the kind of, the high points on performance and data management. So, on financial management, this is, this is one I kind of like, well, do I, do I really dive into this, it's a little bit, it's a little bit inside baseball, right, but, so, there's a couple of different approaches for how you bill fleet services, you know, do you bill for the actual time and parts, or do you allocate based on a formula? The benefit of a direct billing approach is that it gives departments really clear access to how much does it cost me to own a particular vehicle, and theoretically, you'd want that to, to push and guide decisions about getting rid of vehicles that, that are sort of low, are not utilized as well as you might think. So, you know, there's some benefits to that, there could be some opportunities from utilization perspective in that space, but the, the, there's not really a whole lot kind of happening in terms of, in terms of making those reductions on a utilization basis, so there's a potential to generate some labor efficiency by simplifying the, the billing process essentially, a pretty limited billing staff in terms of numbers, so, you know, creating some efficiency in that space is helpful. The other substantial issue relates to the facility, I'm sure you all are, have, have, have some awareness of this, but the facility, the fleet shop is in pretty, pretty dire shape, so there's some significant need for capital investment in that space, could, rolling that into the fleet, or into the fleet surcharge could be a little bit of a challenge, there could be some sticker shock on that, so some, considering some, some funding models outside of the, outside of the fleet fund for that may, may, may add some value and, and help, help minimize the impact on your operating departments. So, fuel sites, so this was really a, a big part of the, of the process, and just to kind of give you some context of, of what you have within the department, you have about 17 fuel sites, five of which are currently beyond useful life. The other reality is that many of the sites, as you can see from the map here, are located pretty close to each other, okay, so, so there's some, there's some duplication and there's some overlap from a fuel site perspective, you know, as we, as we went through a pretty, fairly extensive analytical process about your fuel site location and, and utilization, we really see an opportunity over a period of time, really, really that's paired with the useful life of some of these, some of these fuel sites, to really consolidate and minimize your fuel site, you're going to, it'll require some upgrades in some spaces and some decommissioning in others, and in total, we see the need to eliminate about 11, 11 fuel sites. This would result in essentially consolidating the sheriff's headquarters site and the central fleet garage site, and to really the central, central facility, maintaining some sites relevant to public works and utilities, and maintaining a few park-based sites that are specific, that really are geographically isolated, you know, Walsingham, Fort DeSoto, for example, and Sankey, those, those places where it's, it will be operationally difficult and inefficient to, to go out and use, and access fuel elsewhere. Now, what I will say, go ahead.
Real quick, what useful life, are you talking about the equipment that is, is on-site?
The fuels, the fuel site, so fuel tanks, the equipment that, that, that is used to basically extract fuel from the tanks and put it into vehicles, that kind of thing.
Any, any environmental issues with our sites?
So, are there environmental issues with the sites? I would say environmental remediation is a, is a, is a necessary part of the decommissioning process, you all are relatively prepared to deal with things, but, but to some degree, when you're decommissioning, you will find things that you don't know were there, so, but I would say you're prepared to do that, so, and I'll talk a little bit about the environmental implications in just a second as well, so I appreciate that question. So, so, so what does this, what does this all mean? There is some operational impact, but that operational impact on departments, in other words, what does it mean for my ability to get fuel in my vehicles, right? That's offset by really implementing a fuel card program, this is a best practice, there's a state program that you all can access where your, your folks, you know, out in the field have ready access to fuel at a gas station, there's an administrative process to really reconcile and reconcile that, and so, so these recommendations have to be implemented in concurrence with really rolling out an effective fuel, fuel card program to maintain your operational effectiveness. So, what, so what are the cost impacts here, right, and what does it mean from an environmental perspective? So, currently, there's about, over the next five-year periods, there's a, there's a, there's about $6 million that's sort of allocated in the capital budget to be able to address some of these fuel site issues, okay? So, in total, it's about $3 million of capital cost to decommission these sites over, over a period of five years, so that's about $3 million in cost avoidance from a capital perspective, okay? There are some operating costs that you'll have to incur, probably about, the estimate is about $300,000 to actually decommission some of these sites, there'll be some additional costs associated with the fuel card, because it's a slightly higher per gallon cost, right? So, there's some, there's some cost implications there, but it will also generate an operating savings of about $50,000 to $60,000 a year, so some initial operating costs, some capital costs, that's currently already budgeted for, by the way, it's, so it's a reallocation, it's not necessarily a new cost, as well as some significant capital cost avoidance.
What are the sizes of these, these sites that we're talking about, decommissioning 11 fuel sites, what are the sizes?
Yeah, so, so, what I will say is there's a, they really vary, some of these sites are, are small, 500-gallon tanks that serve as park vehicles, some of them are much, are much larger, most of the fuel utilized, it goes toward your public works, your, your highway shops, and your central fleet garage, as well as sheriff, so there's really four sites that have the preponderance, nearly 60% of the total fuel distributed throughout the, throughout the county.
Well, we have a long list of property that we've accumulated, we've been working to pull together, that we're going to make decisions on whether we keep or sell, I'm assuming some of these sites would be added to that if we decided to eliminate them.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah, the broader facility plan, that's, that's, that's an, that's an evolving, an evolving animal, I know you all are working through, and frankly, every element of this will have some impact on that, so if you, if you move, consolidate folks, you know, several departments on the south side of the county, for example, that will have some impact on where you might need a fuel site, right, so, so there's some, there's some, you know, as with any plan, this is a snapshot of today, as, as your facility plan evolves, certainly some adjustments will be required, and that's a reasonable.
Yeah, there's a lot of value in, in our sites, not just these sites, but all the sites that we're talking about.
Yeah, many of the sites are in parks, so, you know, so the reality is, you're not, you're not going to be, I doubt you'll want to sell parks, right?
These, these sites that we're talking about?
Many of the sites are in parks, yeah, correct, not all of them, you know, airport property, for example, is one of them, so, they're, they're spread out quite a bit.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, any, any other questions on just, again, I just wanted to hit high level some of the key findings on the fleet side, before we move, any other questions? Go ahead.
On the wrench time that you were talking about, so, does that translate to we're keeping our vehicles the right amount of time? I know that sometimes it's engine operation-related, sometimes it's mileage, sometimes it's, you know, how are we doing, I'm assuming we're doing okay as far as that, as, as industry standards go?
Yeah, so I would say, you all are doing really well compared to most organizations in terms of how you manage vehicle replacement, and how you go about maximizing the useful life of your vehicles. The county, you know, and frankly, this is, this is a great decision, I'm not sure when it happened, but you all have established a vehicle replacement fund that allows you to fund your vehicle replacements in a thoughtful way, and to make sure you're accommodating for fluctuations in what you need from a year-in, year-out basis. One of the, one of the reasons why, you know, implementing a focused fleet management system is important is because you can roll in that vehicle replacement fund process in a way that's not manually done with spreadsheets, right, and the maintenance process, again, is really focused on preventive maintenance, the value of preventive and frankly predictive maintenance, right, is, and I'll tell you the difference in just a second and why it's important, is that it maximizes the useful life of your investment, so. So that's happening, that's the focus. Now, when you think about a fleet management system, you know, there's two types of maintenance. There's preventive maintenance and predictive. Reactive is another one. I won't talk about that, but preventive maintenance, it's your scheduled oil changes and those kinds of things. With an upgraded fleet management systems, you can move into telematics, vehicle telematics, which allows you, based on the utilization of a vehicle, to predict issues before they happen, which gets you out of the, which reduces the amount of reactive and emergency maintenance, which has a fundamental, fundamentally negative impact on service delivery. So there's some, there's some real benefits to really leverage the really good things that you all have done to get even better into the future.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right.
Thank you. On the, on the sites that you looked at, their sites, did you evaluate the use of space? So like on our main site on Olmerton, we have a lot of asphalt space. Is there, would we be able to tighten up some of these spaces on some of our sites? Did you all look at that at all or was that a?
That's, that's, that's a little bit outside of the scope. You're absolutely right. There is a lot of space, especially at the central fleet shop, right? And some opportunities there. There's a threshold to some degree in terms of, you know, there's some, there's some code requirements and limits in terms of how many gallons of fuel you can have on a site. So to some degree, you have some limits in that space. It's about 80,000 gallons. And I, the number escapes me exactly what it is at Central Fleet right now, but not there, but close to it. So we looked at that and that's really, you know, without saying exactly what you ought to do at that site, the overall facility issues at fleet include kind of questions around, around fuel site location.
Yeah, it's just something to think about as we're looking at space and as we're looking at, you know, centralized offices. I mean, that Olmerton site just jumps out as, as prime for something.
It is, it is. And that'll be part of the space planning and looking at that because you've got several operations there. Sheriff has part of it, utilities actually has a building, but you've got a lot of free space. And so as you look at those consolidations and that opens up even more free space, depending upon the outcome of the space study.
Thank you, Commissioner Justice, for sharing that, but I was also wondering if we have engaged in conversation or would engage in conversation with PSTA or any other entity that would have those charging stations. I know that based on what we're doing as it relates to electric buses and fleets and having to put those charging stations in places throughout the county where it makes it more efficient for them to go recharge and then get back out on routes, you know, there may be an opportunity to partner so that helps reduce your costs as it relates to charging stations. So I didn't know if maybe you had thought about that or had conversations.
I agree.
Excuse me. I wanted to follow up on the point that Commissioner Flowers just made because I know when we started that initiative at PSTA, one of the first things that we did was partner heavily with Duke Energy. And they have really, I have to say a shout out to them because they have really come to the table in a great way to help us not only identify where the charging stations could or should be, but also other types of things that could be used to enhance our electric energy infrastructure. So it has been a remarkable partnership and a remarkable beginning because now, as a result of moving in that direction, there are so many opportunities, both public and private, to help us pay for the transitioning of going from diesel to electric.
And we had a very productive meeting with the top team at Duke just, I think, two days ago. I forget exactly, earlier this week, whichever day. But Melissa set up for us to meet with her top, her top people around electric vehicles, around solar. So it was very productive for our top team and their top team to meet and discuss options and ideas. So we are, we are engaged with them and will continue to do so.
Okay. And if it's, if it's all right, I'll pause a little bit on kind of a direct response respect, just I'll move through, because we'll talk about charging stations and sort of the operation, operational requirements about that and I'll, I'll make sure and touch your comment then, okay? Thank you. Okay. So green fleet impact assessment. So let me just, again, just give you an overview of just sort of what we were tasked with and what I, what we're going to review with you. So you know, the focus of this sort of analytical piece is, you know, what are the, what's the impact from a cost perspective and environmental perspective of converting internal combustion engines? So when you see the acronym ICE, that's what that stands for, to electrical vehicles. So financial impact, environmental impact, implementation considerations, and of course, what's the cost benefit, you know, from a policy deliberation perspective? Now, let me give you just a little bit of context in terms of, you know, the things that we sort of look at and seek to protect whenever we focus on implementation. So you know, electrification is sort of, if you think of it as the what, we want to think about the why behind the what. And the why, from our perspective, for a local government, for municipality, county, is service delivery. So we want to make sure that whatever the approach looks like, we're protecting service delivery to the degree that it's possible. There are adjustments that can be made, but that's ultimately a filter that we try to pass our analysis through, right? And then of course, you know, what are the, what are all, what's all the nuance from an implementation perspective and a cost perspective to really inform that policy decision? You know, we're not going to say what you should or shouldn't do. You know, that's not really kind of our role, but we want to give you the information you need to be able to make a fully informed decision about how to move forward.
And assuming that any electric vehicle today versus seven years from now, the cost is probably going to be significantly different. So part of that transition in terms of effective cost management is, I'm assuming we're looking at that too.
Yeah, I feel like I should pay you for the segue, honestly.
Sorry about that, go ahead.
No, it's great. All right. So just a little bit of context, just give you a little bit of context on the market and sort of what the focus is and give you a snapshot of the fleet in terms of, in terms of what we focused on. So, so I think all of you know, and this really speaks to your, to your comment, Commissioner, you know, the electrical market, it's a relatively new market, right? There's, and the reality is there's not a whole lot of historical data that you can draw really firm conclusions on, especially as it relates to government fleet. But what we do know is that the market to date, as it's developed, is really sent, is really focused largely on sedans, vans, and it's just now sort of moving into trucks. So essentially what we would call light duty vehicles, okay? Now, though there isn't a great deal of government fleet and sort of historical data that we can draw really firm conclusions from, there's a lot of good studies and frankly, tools that the federal government has developed, there's academic studies, there are broader automotive industry studies, they really provide a good basis of assumptions and I'll review those assumptions with you and be very specific about what the caveats are, right? Because we're looking at a market that's changing dramatically from a day in, day out basis. So we're, you know, we're giving you a snapshot of what we look like, but giving you also a heads up of what we think is going to change, you know, in the short term and in the long term. Now, so as we look at the fleet, again, we mentioned the sort of number of vehicles that you have, the heavy equipment market, so those, basically think of it in terms of dump trucks, heavy equipment, backhoes, those kinds of things. It's just frankly, not developed from a market perspective. So the focus for our analysis is on the county's light duty fleet. Now, so why, what are the benefits of that, of that focus? So you know, one, it gives you some space in a, with a relatively, with relatively tested technology to start to develop an internal program and develop, you know, institutional skills around electrification. And it positions you to be able to take advantage of opportunities in that heavy equipment space when, when they come up, right? It also, you know, and that's, and that's really, that's part of the value here is that you can, you can implement an approach that builds that internal capacity and really take advantage quickly of techno, of new technology. So what are we, what are we, what are we looking at from a fleet perspective? So I don't think I misquoted the fleet number too badly from memory, but we have about 1,900 total units, about 954 vehicles and about 655 of those are light duty vehicles. So that's really the focus of the electrification analysis. And now in terms of that, in terms of that bucket, about 501 of those are what you would think of as cars, vehicles, sedans. So there's, there's about 154 that are utility carts. You see a lot of these in parks, right? So where it's appropriate, we're going to have a little bit of nuance in terms of how we talk about those types of vehicles versus your traditional sedans, compact cars, trucks, that kind of thing. Now, replacement cycle. So one of the things we, you know, we talked a little bit about earlier is, you know, how is the fleet shop sort of managing the replacement process? And when we, when we look at those light duty vehicles, this is just a breakdown of when they're scheduled for replacement based on your current, current vehicle replacement plan. And it really gives you kind of an eight to 10 year horizon. So as we think about how you implement this, we sort of, we're trying to think about it in terms of those, in terms of that general bucket. But here's the thing, the replacement cycle cannot drive electrification. Ultimately, it's infrastructure development for charging infrastructure that's going to drive it. So I'll spend some time really talking about the nuance there and what's required and honestly, what some of the unique and specific requirements to your jurisdiction are. Yes, sir.
Question. Just to go back for a second, the carts that you talked about that you said we usually see in the parks and those, are those not available in electric?
They are.
And are we, I don't know what our, our fleet is now in the parks. What are those carts currently in the parks?
I'm sure they're mostly electric or.
Many, many of them are gas powered. So there's a, there's a conversion program as well. There, there's a combination of the two.
There's a guy behind you, I think, who wants to.
Oh, great.
Thank you. Good morning. The majority of the golf carts are gas and the other half of that would be battery, but it's lithium, it's lead acid. It's not, it's not the new technology, a lithium ion. So converting those, as Jonathan mentioned, that technology is out there now and we are converting on a annual replacement basis.
Okay. That's why, before we separated that out and just kind of put it over to the side, I was like, well, wait a minute, that should be the first thing we do.
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead, Commissioner.
The cost for converting those vehicles, is it?
You're not turned on there.
I'm sorry. The cost for converting those vehicles, is that less expensive than purchasing a new electric vehicle when you're looking at the lifespan of, of the service typically, what, seven years or so?
Great question. So the replacement cycle is based on the location down at Fort De Soto. They don't last as long because of the salt. The typical golf cart costs around $9,000. To buy a golf cart with the lithium ion batteries is a conversion that takes place while it's new. So we're changing, we're transitioning to that technology with that conversion. That cost for that lithium ion powered battery is $15,000 per golf cart. The performance to date, it's brand new technology, as Jonathan mentioned, the performance to date, the feedback we're getting, it should expand life cycle. They're performing that well. So we're hoping to take some of these existing life cycles and stretch them out.
Okay. Okay. So that's just, again, context for what we looked at and sort of the focus, right? So what's, what's the impact?
I'm sorry. Go back to that last slide, please. You made a comment that I, because I was looking at that slide thinking, okay, if we could go out another 10 years and show that in 2024, when those were going to be replaced, the 2024 fleet that we're replacing, it almost, you know, seems to me that, you know, as those would be perhaps just continue to be gas purchases as we move forward. And now you're saying that the infrastructure is actually driving it so that if we get the infrastructure in place in, say, 25, 26, 27, then that next round, those, those would be picked up. I'm assuming that's the thought process behind.
He's going to get into some of that and part of it has to do with how much we want to invest based upon our space plan because there's different types of charging stations. And so there might be things that we can do that are cheaper now that we would invest heavier in later following a conversion of space. So it gets, I think there's going to be a process we have to go through to continue to evaluate this over the next several years in conjunction with our space plan, but he will get into that.
Absolutely. Thank you. Okay. All right. So there are a number of sort of very specific cost buckets and cost drivers. And the first one obviously is vehicle purchase price, right? So as most of you know, I, most electric vehicles are more expensive to purchase than the internal combustion equivalent. Now, for the residential homeowner, that tends to be offset by tax breaks. As a municipal, as a county, those tax breaks don't necessarily apply unless you come up with some creative leasing options. So there may be some space here. But what we looked at is, you know, based on a market assessment of what do these vehicles cost now to replace your current vehicle inventory with a similar vehicle and electric vehicle status over about 10 years, that's 655 light duty vehicles, it's about 7.8 million. So now, what does this mean from a, it's kind of a, kind of a scary number, right? But you have to think this is sort of a 10 year scaled implementation. Each one of those vehicles, you know, the additional cost per vehicle type is a little bit different. On average, it's about $11,000 in additional cost per vehicle, but as you can see, the carts are a little less expensive, your SUVs are a bit more expensive from a conversion perspective. But this really reflects current, current markets now.
So that's additional cost, that's 7.8.
That's correct.
Additional.
That's correct. Yeah. So now, there, yes, ma'am.
So I hope in your slides.
Microphone.
Thank you, Commissioner Justice. I hope in your slides that you're going to share, so you're talking about the extra cost to purchase them. How about we, do you have something in there that shows how much money you save?
Yes, ma'am.
Because you're not buying gas.
I do.
Yay. I can't wait to see that. Thank you.
Sure thing. Now, there are a couple of, there are a couple of caveats here, right? So this is the biggest, this is the biggest number, right? What we know is that government incentives and government programs are rapidly evolving in this space. As with any new market, it's nearly inevitable that the cost of these vehicles is going to decline as economies of scales are generated, as markets fully develop and mature. There may be opportunities to think differently about the types of vehicles that you have. For example, replacing a truck with a maybe a smaller vehicle that's more cost, more affordable. So there are some implementation caveats. The cost is going to decline. So this, you know, this cost benefit picture is going to improve with time as those market matures. You know, government agencies are going to develop cooperative purchasing agreements to service. It's just going to take some time, you know, based on where we're at now and where we're going for that to develop. So that's, that's an important caveat just to, just to keep in mind. So fuel energy cost. So directly, I mean, the segues are great. I really do, I really do appreciate it, so. So, so obviously, you know, when you purchase an electric vehicle, when you implement an electrical vehicle, you have a 100% reduction in gasoline usage, right? But that is offset by the cost of the energy, right? So in, in the cost of the energy and the type of the energy, which I'll talk about, you know, as we discuss environmental impact. So as we, as we sort of evaluate, okay, what would, what would the impact be in your particular market? The Department of Energy has some really great resources to sort of assess, all right, what's the difference in terms of cost and utilization, you know, based on, based on the state of Florida? So not specific to Pinellas County, but a reasonable conclusion, right? So as we, as we, as we look at the actual fuel usage, it's based on utilization. So if a vehicle drives, you know, 15,000 miles a year, you basically multiply that by the average cost of fuel, right? And that gives you a sense of what you're spending on fuel. The calculation essentially identifies that you can expect really about a 57% reduction in total in, in cost. So what we did is we looked at your average utilization for all of these internal combustion vehicles in the past and, and it results in about a savings of nearly $200,000 a year. Okay? So, but that's after full implementation. So pretty significant fuel savings. Now, that fuel savings is going to increase pretty significantly as the cost of fuel increases, right? The cost of fuel per gallon. So again, this is one of those things that's highly variable and will also be influenced by what happens on the electric generation side of the market as it relates to, as it relates to incentivizing electrification. So the other kind of piece that I'll, that I'll add is there are, one of the challenges with the, the energy infrastructure is it's not really built, the electric infrastructure to accommodate what's called cluster charging, where you're charging nearly every vehicle overnight, right? So there's some, I'll touch a little bit about kind of what that means, but rates are going to vary based on peak or non-peak. So there's some specific things that will ultimately drive what your actual cost is, but this gives you just a little bit of a sense of what you can reasonably expect from But this gives you just a little bit of a sense of what you can reasonably expect from a fuel reduc, fuel cost reduction perspective. So parts cost. This is another, another area that's, that's an important cost bucket. So one of the great things about electrical vehicles is that they're just much more mechanically simple than internal combustion engines. And, you know, hybrid vehicles are actually much more complicated and require a lot more of an effort from a mechanic perspective, but electrical vehicles don't. So we, we expect a pretty significant reduction in parts expense. So it's kind of difficult to real, again, that government fleet data to draw firm conclusions. But what we see from basically surveys of consumers and surveys of fleets that have actually implemented this program from Consumer Reports, you can expect at least a 50% reduction in your parts cost. So when we look at your historical parts costs for those 655 light duty vehicles, we see a savings of about $75,000 in parts cost alone. This may be, this is likely a pretty conservative estimate. I would expect this in reality to, to drive up. But in terms of what I can draw a conclusion that I can reasonably defend at this point in the market, you know, 75,000 is a reasonable estimate. Maintenance cost, right? Again, this is that other, the other side of the maintenance expenses. There's parts and then there's labor. You know, one of the great things is, is about the European Union is they have a little bit more experience with electrification than we do. And we have some pretty good data, survey data to indicate, what does it mean, what does electrification mean in terms of reducing the number of hours required to maintain vehicles? Right now, and basically we see about a 40% reduction. That's what historically you're seeing. And that's going to have a pretty significant impact in terms of the number of labor hours. So right now, there's, there are really three mechanics who focus primarily on light duty. EV implementation will generate about 2,000 labor hours once it's fully implemented, again, over that 10-year implementation period. About 1,300 of that relate to direct maintenance. There's additional training administrative time that can be cycled out as well. And that's the equivalent of about one FTE at a cost of about $93,000 a year. So, so what does that mean? That, there are, you know, when you get to the point where you've sort of reached that, that electric, that full implementation period, you can potentially redistribute those resources elsewhere. You can find alternative sort of uses for the positions, but you know, based on attrition, there are alternatives there that you can consider. But whether it's capacity or whether it's hard cost savings, there's likely going to be an opportunity there. Now, charging infrastructure. So this is, this is where things get a bit, get a bit complicated. So, you know, as I mentioned, in order to implement an electrification program, you first have to have the infrastructure in place to support charging, right? That's, that's, that's step one, you know, regardless of what the approach is. Now, there are currently really three different levels of charging stations that are, that are on the market. Each one offers different advantages and disadvantages from a serviceability perspective and from a cost perspective. Level one charging, this is sort of what you would see if you had, if you got an electrical vehicle and you wanted to put something in your garage, right? It's the same kind of technology. It runs off of 120 volt and typically it can support an overnight charge. The high end cost of those are about $1,500 per unit, okay? Level two charging, this is a bit more common in a commercial kind of use. It accommodates a three to four hour charge, but it also typically requires electric service upgrades, okay? Both for the facility as well as for the transformer that, that connects the electric grid to that facility. The cost of those are about $6,500 on the high end. Level three or DC fast charging, this charges in 30 to 45 minutes. These are the kinds of things you see on the highway when a place to pull off and charge for a long drive and get a quick charge. Very expensive, can run as high as $40,000. Probably not necessary to consider for this operation, but just wanted to give you a sense of, of what, what those buckets are.
Those ranges are large. So what, what are those variables from 400 to 6,500 on the level two and the other one's 10,000 to 40,000?
Sure. So this, it's based on a survey, your, your individual implementation considerations and what has to be done on the site is going to matter. So there's, there's, there's a lot that goes into it and I'm trying to give you a good understanding of what are the potential costs. But any of this, especially as it relates to facilities, is going to have to be specifically defined for, for your, for your areas, right?
And we're, and we're really starting. So you're probably leaning towards the higher side numbers.
I would say so. And in terms of estimating costs, cost impact, I'm naturally conservative in that space. I've assumed the higher cost impact, just to give you some context.
Oh, sorry, Commissioner Gerard.
When I put a level two charging station at my house, it was about $1,200 for a T20 line. How long does a charge last or how many miles do you get or is it all over the place?
It is all over the place. And so we, what we, we refer to that as a duty cycle. Now, one of the things that we looked at and when we determined, and I'll, I'll cover this really on the next slide, is how much do you have to get off of an individual charge? And most of your vehicles can accommodate an overnight charge. So, so the duty cycle is such that, that you can do it. But it's not really operational, operationally feasible and I'll, I'll talk about why.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. So give you a little bit, again, again, the segue. Perfect. So vehicle duty cycle, again, this is the average number of miles driven per vehicle. This is another one of those areas that is going to, it's just going to expand as the market matures, right? Right now, the number of, the average number of miles for the vehicles in that, in that light duty class that we talked about will accommodate being able to charge overnight, not necessarily having charged today, which is level one charging, right? But the reality is, is that level two charging is what would be required, especially during disaster events, right? Whenever you, you're not operating under a normal shift schedule, you're not working an eight to 10 hour day, right? You don't have that big bandwidth of time with which to accumulate a slow charge, okay? So some combination of the two is going to be required. You all may end up with 75% level two or 100% level two. You may end up with a different balance. For purposes of just sort of looking at it, we see in some, some cases, you can accommodate level one, but with a, but with a, a service upgrade from 120 to 208 volt, which will increase the capacity of the charging. So still some facility upgrades. So really a 50/50 balance between level one and level two charging is what we have assumed. Again, implementation dependent, but that's the basis.
But you're still talking one charging station per vehicle?
Per, for 501 vehicles. So we're not talking about charging stations for those utility carts, for example.
Right.
Right? So we back those out. But that's, you know, that's, that's really what's, what's required because you're using your vehicles at the same time and you're not using your vehicles at the same time. So if you, if you implemented some kind of a rotating charging plan on level two, that would also have a pretty fundamental, fundamental impact on operational efficiency and service delivery, which we want to try to minimize those negative impacts by designing the infrastructure to support service delivery.
Right.
Okay?
Yep.
So the cost of implementing those 501 terminals, again, and again, this is a, you know, this assumes the higher end of that unit cost is about $2 million. So facility electrical service, this is one where I would have loved to give you a reasonable assumption about what the cost would look like, but I couldn't, I can't do that. It's so much dependent on the particular impact and frankly, the conversations with Duke. But there are going to be electrical upgrade requirements and that could potentially represent a significant capital, capital expense. So you have to really evaluate those on a per facility basis. You all have over 90 facilities in the county that you, that you operate, right? Our focus is to say, okay, looking at the six facilities that really house most of your, most of your light duty vehicles and most of your operations, that's really the initial focus. And again, you know, you talk about the facility, the facility assessment plan that you all are going for in terms of, in terms of relocating facilities, that's also going to have a fundamental impact on this. So to some degree, this will have to be amended to reflect what you decide in that space. But it's, it is a good opportunity, frankly, if you're moving into a place where you're considering constructing new facilities and reassigning folks, there's space to sort of intentionally build in this charging infrastructure as part of that plan, right?
Yeah. Go ahead.
Well, just because it's the way I process, but, and I don't know if this is the right place to insert this idea in the conversation, Barry, but in listening to you talk about the numbers and so on and the sites and so on and so forth, it occurs to me that because we are county government and we are so large, that it could potentially be a real incentive if we were to partner with some of those 24 municipalities in our county that also have fleets and maintenance and, and, and in their budgets. And that maybe in that way, we could have an even larger impact on reducing the carbon footprint in this very pristine gorgeous paradise we live in, surrounded by water. I mean, wouldn't that be a fabulous role model for the rest of our partners in the state as it relates to developing a real futuristic, you know, agenda, not just for today, but for generations to come?
I think in this area, we certainly can always partner and I'd, frankly, I'd have to ask if we have contracts with others. You know, when you have a, and really in larger like Clearwater or St. Petersburg, they have their own fleet, you know.
Well, that's my point.
And, and they probably geographically partner with some of the smaller cities around them potentially. If we were to partner with, with folks, a lot of times it's on like heavier equipment vehicles and things like that. Or because they're so small, they just contract with some, with a provider within their particular city. But we're always open into looking at partnering ideas. We do that in a lot of areas.
I think it's worthy of conversation.
Yeah. And, and we're always open to those.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. So the other really important question for us, and again, this is getting to your specific needs as a, as a county, is your disaster response capacity. You know, one of the challenges with relying on the electrical grid to service your vehicles is that electric grid can sometimes go out. I know there are some parts of the county even with just, I, I, there was a storm a few years ago where there were some places with, that lost power for a week, right? So there's some, there's some challenges in that space. So what, what sort of mobile charging infrastructure sort of technology exists? I would say this is a relatively emerging market. There's not a, there's not a great solution that can service a large government, government fleet to provide charging resources apart from purchasing diesel power generators that would, that would be positioned at various sites. So.
I'm so sorry, but this is such a, a big issue for me. I'm curious, when you were looking at this study that you've done, were you just looking at county or did you also look at those entities that we oversee their budgets? Like I'm thinking, for example, the Sheriff's Department, who has a huge fleet. Did you look at them as well?
Constitutional officers, no. No.
See, there was another partner, Barry.
Yeah. I think, you know, there's a starting place.
Yeah, we're, we're trying, we're, we're trying to get a hand, a strategic direction on ours. But like when he talked about consolidating at our fleet, there, there's definitely next levels of conversation regarding, you know, bringing others into that fold.
Music to my ears. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Those take time.
No problem. Yeah. So.
Nope. Go ahead.
So, you know, in the, as that sort of mobile charging technology evolves, there are some things that Tesla does. Tesla doesn't tend to be the most cost affordable option. But, you know, there are some things that they are developing that we, you know, we expect the market to sort of move in a good direction. But in the interim, the investment would be really in tow behind diesel generators that you would position at each of those six facilities. That would require a pretty substantial generator to support charging infrastructure, about 500 kilowatts. You can pull about 50 EVs at level two charging. But what I will say with a generator, the more vehicles you have charging at a time, there's almost a direct decrease, a proportional decrease in the time or increase in the time it takes to charge those vehicles. So there are some restrictions and challenges with that approach. Based on your current cooperative purchasing agreements, the, the generator sort of in this space and in this class is about $180,000 each. So about $1.1 million to have a generator at each one of those, one of those facilities.
For the electric side. But I mean, we have, we have generators there now if the power goes out to pump gas.
That's correct. But those generators would not be able to.
Right. I understand. And so, I mean, again, we're talking to, you know, say a 10-year, I'll just pick 10-year transition.
Exactly.
But we clearly have gas opportunities over the next few years. It's not like we're changing tomorrow.
And I'll talk a little bit about implementation timing, but you're absolutely right. There has to be a leveled, a sort of scaled approach to be able to build that infrastructure and carry it forward.
Letting go of something that we know versus something that we hope for. I mean, we have to be.
Yeah. Sure. Yeah. So those are the major cost impacts. So let me, what I've tried, I've tried to do here is just kind of summarize, you know, what those cost impacts are and give you, and annualize them a little bit so you actually have some sense of what does this mean from an annual cost impact perspective. So, you know, looking at the vehicle purchase cost, you're looking at about an additional $784,000 per year. Again, that cost will very likely decrease as the market evolves, right? In terms of the operating cost, you're going to see about $365,000 in, in annual savings for fuel, for parts and for maintenance. Okay? So again, this is also, you know, one of those areas, especially on the fuel side, that as efficiencies occur at the fuel, or at the energy generation plants, you may see some advantages here as, as government incentives. So there's some, some caveats and some flexibility in terms of potentially realizing additional savings in that space.
So we have a plus 784 and then a minus 363.
That's correct. And then on the capital cost side, so this is, this is a little bit of maybe swag math, but I tried to take that $3.1 million in sort of total, total capital investment and just amortize it over a 10-year period to give you a sense of what that debt service might cost. Maybe you can, you amortize it over a longer period or shorter period, you pay cash, but I just wanted to, given that we're looking at frankly, a 10-year horizon, sort of what does that shake out to? About $342,000 a year to invest in those, fully invest in those charging stations. Again, the caveat, that does not include your, your facility electrical service upgrades. So the conversations that would evolve with Duke in terms of what that means in terms of upgrading the infrastructure, the distribution infrastructure, what if anything, the county will contribute toward that effort as well as facility upgrades to make sure that the service can support cluster charging overnight. So all in, we see about a net annual cost increase of about $762,000 a year to implement this based on the current snapshot, okay? So that's the cost. Okay? Any questions before I move on to the environmental impact? All right. So obviously, the, the, the benefit side of the, of the equation is the environmental, the environmental implications of those transitions, right? So right now, so we, there's a, frankly, there's a, there's a pretty good formula that the EPA provides that gives us an ability to estimate what are the carbon emissions that those current 655 vehicles expel into the atmosphere on an annual basis. And there's about 1,760 US tons of CO2 per year, okay? So pretty good, pretty, pretty good number. So now, one of the realities is, is that the Pinellas County power supply is not from renewable sources. It's primarily provided by coal and natural gas. Florida at large is about 75% natural gas for, for, for the, for the electric grid. So it's not a, it's not a 100% reduction in CO2 in terms of the environmental impact. So as we think about environmental impact, it's important to think about not just the direct use, so what's the offset from using the vehicle, but what are the other implications associated with, with the, the electrical vehicle manufacturing process? So related to use, based on your sort of current energy composition, where you get your energy from, there'll be about a 65% reduction in CO2 emissions among that light duty fleet once fully implemented. So that's a, you know, that's a pretty good number, a pretty substantial impact. That is offset to some degree. So, you know, the, the process of manufacturing electric vehicles, especially related to battery development, is, is, has a much higher sort of net impact in terms of CO2 emissions than an internal combustion engine. It's a new market. There are some environmentally, there's some significant environmental impacts associated with the development. So that's about an eight, we estimate about an 18% increase. And this is based again on a, on a, on a broader study of kind of a full assessment of the environmental and sort of human impact associated with electrification to inform some of these policy discussions. And then end of life, again, batteries, especially the lithium batteries, or there's, there's an environmental impact at the end of life from a decommissioning perspective. And there's an estimate of about a 21% increase in CO2. So when you take all of these together, the average reduction in CO2 emissions is about 23% estimated going forward. Again, this will change. The pace at which your energy generation sort of system evolves will probably move a little bit slower than the pace at which your electrical vehicle market evolves, right? The manufacturing processes will improve. There will be improvements in this space, whether they happen over a 10-year period or in an advanced enough pace to really significantly bend this trajectory. I can't answer that question. So the average sort of total impact, okay, looking at your fleet, and then we're using an, an average based on a mid-sized sedan vehicle that will increase or decrease based on the type of vehicle, is about 405 US tons of CO2 emissions per year once it's fully implemented. So what is for, what does that mean? What are 405, you know, 405 US tons mean? That's the equivalent of eliminating about 70 internal combustion engine vehicles from your fleet and give you a little bit of context. Okay? So what's the cost benefit? What's the, what's the, what's the analyzed cost benefit? When we, when we sort of break it down, it's a total cost of about $188,000 per 100 US tons of CO2 emissions reduced. So that's the metric, right? That's the metric to pay attention to as you sort of advance through implementation. And I'll talk about a few other things that you may want to pay attention to as well. So what are the implementation considerations? Given everything that I've told you, right, or shared with you, all of the, all of the sort of capital investment impacts and thinking about the implementation and replacement timeline. So there are a couple of opportunities. The first is really to sort of initiate some small-scale conversions over the next couple of years, right? Those things that can support level one charging that aren't going to require significant facility upgrades to begin to make progress on electrification and to build institutional capacity, right? To build expertise within this organization with how to manage and implement electrification. The next piece that really has to happen concurrently is what are we going to do with, from our facility's perspective? What's our capital investment plan? Where do we need to put charging stations and where? Or, and, and what sort of composition of level one, level two? It may be level two, only level two, you know? So, you know, building that capital plan and investing in that infrastructure has to, has to be the precedent before you really move into full electrification. And then the, the kind of third bucket that I would sort of consider as an implementation, an option, would be to focus on building that initial charging infrastructure on those departments that don't have a direct role in disaster response, right? So you can mitigate, you know, some of the impacts associated with purchasing additional, additional charging, you know, tow behind diesel generators. You can allow that market, that mobile charging station market to evolve a bit and position you to be able to take advantage of that going forward.
Are there such things as, are they developing such things as mobile? So that a truck, I mean, our trucks are all over the place. So that, you know, we can send a generator type out and give that quick shot of whatever, so that.
So, yeah, so the model that I think is, is probably most likely to advance, and again, it's, Tesla tends to lead the development. They have a, it's called a power pack and it's, it's basically a tractor trailer size charging station where you set level one chargers and you can tow it to a particular area, get a quick charge and move out. It's very expensive and they're not widely available, right? So that, that, I think that's where it's going to go. Hopefully the cost decreases and, and, and that gives you what you need. All right. So, so what does this mean? So I've given you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But it seems like as time goes on, there'll be more and more stations.
Absolutely.
Everywhere where you can get charging, not just our own, but somebody else's.
Yeah, and you know, the, to me, as I think about, you know, the real value to this approach is that it gives you the, it helps position you to quickly take advantage of new technologies that evolve, you know? I, I think it, and honestly, will, will help you become more nimble and able to take advantage of those opportunities. So. So what do you, so obviously we've sort of laid out a, you know, an implementation horizon and a kind of a phasing approach that makes sense. But you want to be able to monitor the progress of these metrics, of these cost benefit indicators as you evaluate when to sort of initiate different phases of investment, right? That first really important metric, that roll-up metric, the annualized, you know, cost per 100 U.S. tons of CO2 reduced, that's, that's the measure. But what's going to drive changes in that, you know, just to highlight a few items, looking at a purchase price, paying very close attention to what that ratio of internal combustion engine to electrical vehicle purchase price is. Looking at really, how is the environmental impact going to change? And this is probably the more difficult to pay attention to. There's a lot of, sometimes there are competing studies. There isn't necessarily a single government source, for example, federal government source that's really driving a, a recurring annual metric to help, help estimate this. So this one will require a little bit of nuance in terms of evaluating on an ongoing basis. And then looking at fuel energy cost, again, your cost per gallon of fuel is going to increase and decrease and go sideways and who knows, right? I think, you know, they're just, with, with Irma in the Gulf, I think we can all expect a significant increase over the next month or so in fuel cost, right? So, so there's going to be, that's one of those things that you, it's like trying to throw a dart at a moving dartboard. And then looking at the, you know, percent increase or decrease in the annualized expense for charging infrastructure, again, those categories that we talked about, charging stations, your facility upgrades, and your disaster response especially. So.
Just a question on that, on those prices you talk about. We keep thinking they're going to come down, but I would imagine at some point it would happen. But there's going to be a supply-demand thing. I'm, I'm, I'm assuming that we're not the only ones doing this around the country. So there's going to be an increasing demand on anything we're talking about. So I'm, I'm just wondering about those cost reductions in the next 10 years not really materializing.
That, that's certainly fair. And frankly, the degree to which you can actually get electrical vehicles when you want them is going to be challenged on that supply side as well. So that's going to influence your, your implementation timeline as well.
But that's also part of, you know, kind of the rollout of looking at our infrastructure necessary to support that, right now, if, if we said, let's convert our fleet tomorrow, we couldn't get that many, you know, vehicles. The supply side's not there. But that's quickly changing. I mean, you've got entire industries that are converting all their, you know, passenger cars to electric over the next five, 10 years. And so, you know, but right now, we can buy a gas-powered vehicle off of a state contract. You can get a, a fusion at, you know, $15,000 or something so cheap. That's going to change because as that, as that market catches up, we'll then be able to buy them off state contract at a reduced price. But it, but it's just not there yet. And so it gives us time to kind of build the capacity, get the experience, and put some of the infrastructure in place while we, while we watch this market change to where we're making good, not only a good environmental decision, but a good cost-effective decision too. And I think they'll align.
Commissioner Gerard.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, you know, we're talking 10 years out, but there may be opportunities sooner to get, you know, federal money to purchase vehicles. Are we even prepared to do that? Do we have?
Hank's got a slide on that coming up in his presentation.
Okay, great.
Yeah, go ahead, Commissioner.
So this is so exciting to talk about. But PSTA has gotten the lead on making sure that we are positioned to get electric because we are in the process of purchasing a very large number of brand-new electric buses. And it isn't lost on me when you talk about the issues during a disaster or a hurricane, that those buses have the ability, because they're not on the highway during a, a major storm, they can be used as generators.
Absolutely.
So I know they were enormously helpful to the sheriff in all those intersections where he had no traffic lights, for example. So they're, they're really, I'm excited because we're, we're, we're receiving a grant to pay for them and that's even better.
Yeah. That is a disaster response metric that I meant, or benefit that I intended to mention and I didn't, so I really appreciate that comment. You can use the electric vehicles to power your intersections, right? They're mobile generators in their own right, which has some significant value in a disaster response, response situation. Yes, ma'am. Okay. All right. So final thoughts. I believe I've hit all of these ad nauseam, but I'll do it one more time just because, you know, why not? So obviously, there is a cost. There's a cost to EV conversion at this time. That cost is going to probably change fairly considerably over time as the market evolves. But there's some, for some clear environmental benefit as well. There are immediate conversion opportunities. There's ways to make headway in the fleet now. But focusing on that infrastructure development and being very intentional about it and integrating that with your broader facility management plan and development plan is going to be really an important, a part and part of the process. Disaster response capacity is important. It needs to be a filter that you pass these decisions through, right? And then of course, again, again, I'll emphasize that focus on building capacity. So, you know, I, I, I'm not going to tell you what I think you ought to do, obviously. I'm just trying to give you the information that you need to make a good policy decision. And, you know, I appreciate all the questions so far and I'm happy to answer any other questions you all, you all may have.
Well, don't go too far. We're going to hear from Hank here in a few minutes and we'll probably circle back with some questions.
Hank will be up next and he's going to really talk about kind of that phased approach and that. But as you can see, kind of, if we put the plan in place, we, we have the metrics to make good decisions based upon that, but we start now and we go forward. So, so we're intentional about where we're going and that helps our staff plan. But we're making the right decisions at the right time based upon some of these evolving markets. And so we're trying to overlay that in addition to looking at the space plan to where we're not, you know, wasting money. So that was the, kind of the, the approach. And, but I'd like Hank to get, you know, kind of show you his thoughts on this. He's worked hand-in-hand on this and with all of our departments in terms of where we're going with this.
Thank you.
Happy to come up and answer other questions. Thank you for your time.
Sounds good.
But while Jonathan's up there, as you can see, another very thorough report, you know? And something that I think he really brings some outside expertise to be able to give that analysis.
Thank you.
Yes, and before Hank comes up, I would just like to put this thought in everybody's head. You know, that 10-year timeframe just rings my bell. I mean, if you look at what's going on around our country and even around the world in terms of how quickly our weather patterns are changing, how we have whole parts of our country that are on fire and the fact that we are quickly losing our water supply. I read an article just recently that the water levels in the Hoover Dam are drying up, which has a direct impact on our agriculture and our farming and our ability for our crops to grow. Hence, the cost in the supermarket when you go to buy produce is going out of sight. I mean, if you think that 10-year timeframe is going to help us get a handle on those kind of things, I mean, God bless you, because a little baby born today, this, these are the things that we're focusing on right now that will determine whether or not they really have a future to look forward to. So please keep that in your thoughts because these decisions are just not about today, really and truly. I had to say that because, you know, I am a great-grandmother now.
Okay, so we got Hank online today. So.
Aww.
I know, he wanted to be here, but he couldn't. So I think he's, yeah, I can see him on the screen.
Next best, next best thing. He's here.
Well, he does have little babies at home, so we have to forgive him for not being here.
Welcome, Hank. You've got a presentation for us?
Yes, good morning. I'm going to share my screen right now. Okay, can everyone see it?
Yes.
We're good.
Great. Okay. Well, good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. My name is Hank Hattie. I'm the County Sustainability and Resiliency Coordinator. It's a pleasure to be with here, with you today to talk about the future of electric vehicles at both the local and federal levels, especially opportunities for Pinellas County. I, I had full intentions of being there in person today, but early this morning, I got news of something and I had to adjust. And so here I am virtually and I'm happy that we still have this capability to do so. So my apologies on that. In today's presentation, I'll provide some background on actions within Pinellas County government, give a summary of support that we're receiving through partnerships, provide a snapshot of regional efforts from other local entities, and finally, cover some of the highlights at the national level. But to start though, I want to provide us a few statistics that I think are important. As of December 2020, there are almost 80,000 electric vehicles in the state of Florida. There are 3,800 roughly electric vehicles in Pinellas County, so that's roughly 5%, and 170 public EV charging stations. According to our analysis, battery electric vehicles and EV charging infrastructure in Pinellas County have doubled since 2018. So that's a significant increase. Also, what's important here is that on-road vehicle transportation is now the largest single source of carbon, carbon emissions within the United States. So some, some background within our governmental organization. We just want to touch on the timeline here and how we've grown and progressed. Going to my records that I was able to find, starting in 2008, Administrator LaSala delivered a memo to the commission detailing the fleet composition and outlined some alternative fuel strategies at the time. They found that conversion to a hybrid vehicle yielded a 12-year payback period, which is five years longer than our seven-year vehicle replacement plan. And so it wasn't feasible and we only had one hybrid unit at the time. In 2010, we issued an administrative directive 7-3 on vehicle idling to improve air quality and to reduce fuel consumption rates. In 2013 and 15, the solid waste department purchased four hybrids total, two in each year. The photo on the top right shows one of the hybrid vehicles parked at solid waste with a charging station that they have installed. And we are getting return on investment data from those hybrid vehicles that were included in the fleet assessment report. In 2018, staff formed an initiative called One Green Fleet in response to inquiries from the commission. It was put on hold when we knew that the fleet assessment was being conducted. That said, this might be something we can pick back up, especially with the results from the fleet assessment and what Jonathan just presented to you. There's a real opportunity to solidify perhaps an internal working group, which is now a standard best practice with our peers, something that I'll touch on later in the presentation. In 2019, the commission entered into an agreement with Duke Energy Florida to install EV charging stations through their park-and-plug program. As of now, we have 10 EV stations at eight county facilities with a total of 20 plugs. So that's two station, two plugs per station. As of now, we know that we have an additional seven stations at other county locations, including the airport, the Star Center, and solid waste facility, as I mentioned, that were installed by the county entity or through a tenant. And then finally, in 2021, this year, we purchased our two, our, our first two full electric vehicles to replace those hybrid vehicles that solid waste bought in 2013. And we're, we're very happy to have the Chevy Poles. And I believe one is outside the facility. I'm not there right now. So to touch on EV support and synergy that we're receiving, receiving, this, this slide shows a sampling of organizations that we're working with, whether through basic knowledge, transfer, or data analysis. I'll be honest, I got many inquiries to partner on fleet electrification when I first started with the county, but I wasn't sure if we were ready. However, just being in front of you today indicates that we are ready and we're eager to get going. So I wanted to go kind of around the horn here, starting with the Southern Alliance for Clean Energy. And I think most of you know Susan Glickman. They've really jumped in, all in on supporting us and others in their Electrify the South camp program and campaign, including education, educating staff on their online policy toolkit and even hosting a Driving on Sunshine EV ride and drive for the county staff in November of 2019. Drive Electric Florida is a member-based organization out of Tallahassee supporting EV-friendly policy and programs. The Tampa Bay Clean Cities Coalition is an organization based out of USF and funded by the U.S. Department of Energy, created to coordinate and promote the use of non-traditional and cleaner energy for transportation in the Tampa Bay region. Now, we talked about Duke a little bit earlier. Duke Energy actually created E-Trans Energy to provide fleet owners with strategic guidance and hands-on support to electrify their fleets from pre-planning to scaled solutions for every aspect of fleet electrification. They provide a wide variety of support, including electric vehicle financing, EV charging infrastructure, strategic commissioning, renewables and operations, optimizations and maintenance, and basically the works. And we've heard that Duke Energy Florida is trying to transition their entire fleet, or most of it, light duty, so they're an organization to learn from. And as Barry mentioned, this week, we heard from staff that they're looking into consumer incentives for EV charging stations for residential and business markets. Basically, the question we had to them was, what's the future of the park-and-plug program? And where are you all going and how we can partner? And right now, they're looking into incentives for that. The Electrification Coalition is a national, nonpartisan, non-for-profit group of business leaders committed to promoting policies and actions that facilitate the deployment of EVs on a mass scale. Their main goal is to reduce U.S. oil dependency. They believe that electric mobility is one of the best scalable alternatives because of the large oil consumption and carbon footprint within the transportation sector. I've even had recent conversations with them recently about, you know, what, what does total cost of ownership mean? And how do we factor in depreciation, insurance, maintenance, fuel? And some of their analyses show that it's, it's fairly competitive, comparable to an internal combustion engine. And they have a lot of case studies online of communities that have transitioned already and how they've approached it, including many communities in the state of Florida. So finally, at the bottom, Climate Mayors is a bipartisan network of more than 470 U.S. mayors demonstrating climate leadership through meaningful community actions. Following, following an electric vehicle request for information, or RFI, in 2017 from 31 major U.S. cities, they formed the Climate Mayor's EV Purchasing Collaborative. This collaborative works to leverage the buying power of climate mayor cities to reduce the costs of EVs and charging infrastructure for all U.S. cities, counties, courts, school districts, state governments, and public universities. There are over 200 committed fleets across the U.S. And the Electrification Coalition is the lead on the EV collaborative. Shown on the right of the slide is a report from the Department, Florida Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services Office of Energy, or the Florida Electric Vehicle Roadmap. And this has been referred to as the first comprehensive investigation into the status and needs of EV charging infrastructure in Florida. Not shown here is a more recent initiative. In April of 2021, the Florida Department of Transportation finalized an EV infrastructure master plan based on Senate Bill 7018 in 2020, which was then signed by Governor DeSantis and is now codified in Florida statute. The new law required Florida Department of Transportation to coordinate, develop, and recommend a master plan to develop electric vehicle charging infrastructure along the state highway system. On top of that, the plan also includes barriers to adoption, market demand, utility regulatory considerations, and infrastructure resiliency techniques. So really, there's a, there's a lot of support here that's, that's taking place and a lot of action, not only locally, but around the country. So we have several local, regional, local. So we have several local, regional, local, regional cities that have made progress and entities, and we're lucky to have them as early adopters. We've heard much about PSTA in the past few years and today. And we know that they're pushing the boundary as a local transit authority. You know, as of right now, they have 88 hybrid buses, six full electric buses, and the first inductive wireless charger for buses on the U.S. East Coast. They have a whole promotional campaign online, and I think there's definitely an opportunity to partner. The city of St. Petersburg, they adopted a green fleet policy in September of 2020 and establishes a green fleet working group, among many other things. St. Pete claims that 18% of the city's fleet is now green. It includes 76 hybrids and 11 battery electric vehicles, or BEVs. City of Largo, they've made headlines in the news recently that they are converting a lot of their police vehicles to hybrid. I think it's over 20 right now. And they purchased two all-electric motorcycles. That was a first in the Tampa Bay area. And they have plans to convert all light-duty vehicles and equipment to alternative fuel by 2030. They adopted an alternative fuel policy in 2019, early 2020, and they conducted a fleet optimization study in June of 2021. The city of Tampa, they've established goals in their recently-launched Resilient Tampa Plan. In Action 3.1.3, a new policy commits them to transitioning their fleet of over 3,300 vehicles to become 100% electric. They currently have 23 battery electric vehicles, mainly Nissan Leafs, and they have 36 hybrids, and we're trying to work with them to get their ROI data. Probably the most recent notable action was that the city of Clearwater adopted a green fleet policy just last month. It establishes a green fleet committee, and they plan to convert 100% of municipal light-duty fleet to alternative fuels by 2040. So now on to a national and market priority. I want to talk about the marketplace first.
Hey, Hank. I had a question. On the city of Clearwater and their alternative, are they still focusing on natural gas? Or are they moving into the solar or, you know, electric?
I don't have, thank you for the question, Chairman. I don't have the exact numbers on that or plan. I think that there's something that they're working on. But the policy that they recently passed was basically we wanted to provide an indication and kind of set the tone that, you know, this transition will happen, and we're gonna use multiple avenues, you know, to get there by 2040.
Okay, hang on one sec, Hank. Jill has a comment.
Yes, Commissioners, Jill Silverboard, Deputy County Administrator. The focus for the city, ironic that I know this, is that the heavy-duty vehicles are the ones that they have the conversion ability or the purchase ability for natural gas fuel. So light-duty will be electric-focused.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. Go ahead, Hank.
Thank you, Jill. So back to the national marketplace. And it's pretty exciting to see what's happening out there. So General Motors has committed to 100% EV fleet by 2035. Volvo is committed to 100% EV fleet by 2030. Ford has committed $24 billion by 2025 towards EV fleet. On the right here, we could see a photo of the F-150. I think it's the Lightning that's all-electric. You know, we talked about powering traffic lights earlier, and it's called vehicle-to-grid. You know, during Hurricane Irma, we had to quickly install power converters on our trucks so that they could sit at our traffic lights and power the lights. You know, those trucks could have been used in the field, but unfortunately, they had a, you know, set of the light, which is an important service. You know, these vehicles can be used in grid electricity applications. They can also be used onsite, as onsite generators in, you know, normal daily services. And that's something that Ford is really trying to highlight with this truck. And we're gonna get a sampling of what this truck looks like next month. Ford's doing a national EV F-150 tour that we're gonna be able to attend. Additionally, Volkswagen has committed to 60 new EVs by 2030. As part of Amazon's climate pledge to be net-zero carbon by 2040, it has ordered 100,000 delivery vans from Rivian, a startup EV manufacturer. And even Walmart has committed to 100% zero emission trucks by 2040. So I want to touch a little bit on the federal initiatives right now. As of last month, the Biden administration said that it was aiming for half of all new vehicles sold by 2030 to be electric-powered. This includes the actions of installing the first-ever national network of electric vehicle charging stations and delivering point-of-sale consumer incentives to spur U.S. manufacturing and union jobs. Earlier in the year, President Biden signed an executive order to require replacing the entire fleet of federal vehicles, some 645,000 nationwide, with U.S.-built electric cars, vans, and trucks. The U.S. Post Office was first to the plate when it announced in February of 2021 that Oshkosh Defense contractor will design and assemble between 50,000 or, sorry, 50,000 and 165,000 fuel-efficient internal combustion engine or battery electric powertrain vehicles in the next 10 years. And the photo on the top right is a visual of what the, I think they call it the next-generation delivery vehicle for the U.S. Post Office. And that's a photo of that. As for the recent $1 trillion federal infrastructure bill from Congress, the original proposal for EV infrastructure was some $15 billion. What passed in the Senate was $7.5 billion. If that number holds, then Florida will receive roughly $198 million, according to the Federal Highway Administration formula. I think that there's a real opportunity to be able to grab money, apply competitively, and win money to offer infrastructure solutions within the county, both public and private, to partner with existing entities that, you know, are making headway, as well as some who are thinking about it, and really do this in collaboration. The key, there's been a lot of funding available at the federal and state levels. But one aspect of applying for that funding is you need to have a goal in place. And that's something that we're looking to do and memorialize so that we can be confident when we apply that the reviewers know what our direction is going to be. And that's something that we unfortunately just don't have right now.
Hank, on those monies that you're talking about, are those monies set aside for all infrastructure? That we're talking, you know, like bridges and roads and electrical and all that? Is it all-inclusive?
So the $1 trillion is all infrastructure. The $7.5 billion that's been approved by the Senate is a specific earmark for EV infrastructure nationwide.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, thanks. Commissioner Gerard has a question.
Yeah, Hank, I had a question. We've had numerous requests, as I think we've discussed this up for a, for the Commission to adopt a Ready for 100 policy. Is something like that, would that help in our readiness to apply for federal funds? Or does it need to go beyond that? I guess that's two different questions. I would, because we've had so many requests to adopt the Ready for 100, I'd like to go forward with that if it's not enough. Because I think, well, because I think that's an aspirational thing, and it's, you know, 100% renewable energy by 2050, which sounds like we're gonna be well ahead of that, you know, both nationally and at the county level. And it's important to our constituents. I've been personally putting them off for a long time because I don't think the piece of paper means a whole lot. But as Commissioner Long said, I'm very excited about the progress we're making here and, you know, as a country in terms of getting there. So one, I'd like to do that, and I'd like to have your thoughts on that. But do we also need to adopt something else that goes beyond that or is specific to an electric fleet? I think that's the end of my two questions.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Gerard. I think Ready for 100 is part of the conversation and vision moving forward, if that's what we choose to seek. You're right in that we are a little bit on the pathway there already. You know, the Commission supported the county subscribing to Duke Energy Florida's Clean Energy Connection Program. And so that's gonna offset some 40% of our energy consumption, starting in 2024 with solar. We reviewed Duke's 10-year site plan within the state, and there's a lot of photovoltaic development in solar that's happening in the next 10 years within that Clean Energy Connection Program and outside of it. I mean, we're talking about, currently, they have a commitment for 750 megawatts of solar within the state. So I think that helps to close our gap to meet renewable energy consumption. We need to, you know, be energy efficient first. And then to help with that gap, I think our building consolidation could spur that. And then figure out new emerging technologies at our different facilities. You know, in our strategic plan, as you all are well-versed with, we do have the goal to implement green technologies. And so I think it starts there. I think the Sustainability Resiliency Action Plan, you might see language in there, or goals, or ideas about electrification of the fleet, and perhaps some targets. At least, that's what we're hoping to do. And then, of course, the Ready for 100 provides an aspirational goal that just solidifies a commitment, you know, if that's the route that is chosen to take. There's also a lot of other initiatives to be a part of. The Race to Zero, or Zero Net Carbon, is something that recently has taken traction. And there is an op-ed, I think, from cities of Tampa, St. Pete, and Clearwater on that, and they all decided to join. So I think it helps us get there for sure.
Commissioner Long.
Okay, wait a minute.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Stop calling me about Ready for 100. Would you be willing to bring that forward so we can just adopt it and move on? I know that we're, I know that we have many other things in process. And who knows how many people will be coming to ask us to pass resolutions on this or that. But Sierra Club has been there for a while, and they have been asking for a while, so.
Unfortunately, I can't.
Go ahead. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I was gonna say, unfortunately, I can't turn to my right and look at Barry right now.
Yeah, you're getting an unfiltered view.
I'll do it for you.
Well, let me respond to that. First, we're in alignment with the goals of Ready for 100, you know? And today was really the first time where, you know, we've taken all the actions. It's in your strategic plan. We've started looking at it as a fleet. You know, we purchased the solar. We are in alignment and taking those actions. What we needed was a comprehensive business look at the way to implement new technology. You know, that's key to having a direction about where we're going. So we're starting today. We're starting tomorrow in doing that. What we're really talking about is a long-term plan in terms of the large capital investment and making sure we're very strategic and thoughtful in how we do that. And then also making good decisions at the right time. So from a staff standpoint, we're certainly not opposed for adopting the Ready for 100. We're in agreement. There's, and I appreciate kind of the recognition because as we saw in our, we're not buying, we're buying from coal-fired power plants right now. Until that changes, it's not 100% renewable energy. So, and that's outside of our control. So we just have to recognize the things that are within our control, and we're working toward those as, like you said, an aspirational goal. But we're making good, cost-effective decisions simultaneously. So from a staff standpoint, we're certainly not opposed.
Great. Let me finish up with that. So can we just move forward with passing a resolution that says we'll, we commit to a Ready for 100 thing? I know we're way beyond that, and there are many other things.
If the direction of the Commission is you want us to put that on for future in general, we'd be happy to prepare it.
I think we have it.
Because I think the message that I personally am sending right now is, oh, that's not important to us. Of course, it's important to us, and the how we get there is much more important to me than the fact that we all signed off on a piece of paper. But it's not, it's important to the people on the outside as a symbol that we're moving in that direction. So I would appreciate it if y'all would agree to just move on that. My second question, though, was a little more technical about, do we need to, is there something else specifically that we need to do to be eligible for what might be happening at the federal level beyond the Ready for 100, which I don't think is what they were looking for? Hank?
Hank, do we need some type of a report or adoption or thing from the Commission that would put us in the best position to compete for federal funds? Is there something else that we haven't done that we would need to advance that?
My answer would be yes, that we do need to have an aspirational goal for fleet and work to get there as far as what our transition is gonna look like, a time horizon, and what we're currently committed to and willing to do in the future. There are many communities out there, the ones that, who are able to obtain a lot of the grant funding, for instance, that's available. They have like an electric vehicle implementation plan and roadmap where they can point to multiple goals and objectives. You know, Ready for 100 is about power, being powered by renewable energy. You know, we're talking about transitioning fleet. And so I think it would be beneficial to have a specific fleet-related goal, like some of the communities in our area do, and frankly, around the state and the nation. And we have many good examples to choose from. And what's been presented to us from the assessment, I think, can give us some reasonable assumptions moving forward to make a, to take action on a good approach. My answer would be yes. We need to have something. Can it, I was hoping to have it in the Sustainability and Resiliency Action Plan, which should be brought to you this spring. I'm hoping that there is enough time to have that. I hope the timeline aligns, at least with the federal funding, to have that SRAP and the goal solidified then. We are looking into working with outside consultants to be able to obtain federal funding through the infrastructure bill, and they would have more specificity on what is needed to apply, but it is gonna be competitive.
Okay, hang on a sec.
Okay, just to follow up on that question again.
I know, I'm trying.
I think, I know, I'm sorry.
I have the answer.
No, Hank has the answer.
No, he doesn't. He just said he didn't.
Is that something that if it looks like we need it faster, you could fast-track and bring to us before the sustainability plan? Because I don't want to miss out on any opportunities, and I know you don't.
Commissioner Long.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So in response to your comments and questions, Commissioner Gerard, and also for you, Hank, we just had yesterday another update from Harry, you know, Harry Glenn, who we also have as well, talking about the federal transportation infrastructure dollars as well as the carve-out that's in those monies for electrification. And I've told you, members of the Commission, in my comments from a while ago, that we were working very closely with the Secretary of Transportation's Office on what we needed to do in order to be prepared to apply for federal funds. Whatever it was, we decided in terms of where we were going forward. And there were three major components that an organization had to have to ensure that we were well-positioned to compete for those federal dollars. And it's another reason why I've been so dogged about ensuring that resiliency and sustainability was in every component and value of our strategic plan. Not just because we know the staff is working on it, because it is written in there. And when they speak at these meetings, they reference it and speak to it because that's what they're gonna be looking for. So the piece of paper that I too have been receiving those calls for passing a resolution on the Ready for 100, that is very significant because they're gonna want to know that we didn't just think about it. we didn't just think about it at the 11th hour, but the organization has been working toward sustainability and resiliency and reducing the carbon footprint however we could. So for you, Hank, if you speak with Harry, he's already sent to us his summary of that bill and what's needed, what we're going to be needing to show when we get ready to position ourselves for those monies. Because that's what we're doing at PSTA.
And that's what we're doing also. Brian and Hank have met with Harry.
Good.
And so they're, they're very aware of, of the direction we need.
Excellent.
And so if it is, going to your.
Yeah, no, I, listen, you know, I've had many conversations with the folks about Ready for 100. And I told them, my only concern was, and we're addressing some of that in our meeting today, is it's fine to be aspirational, but I want a reality path on how we get there. And I think that's what we, that's the very conversation that we're having today on our, on our transportation vehicle, fleet for one, is one aspect of that. And so I'm, I'm, I would be more comfortable having had, doing what we're asking for, having the conversation that we've had today.
But one more thing, can I just say one last thing, please?
Go ahead.
What I have asked those groups was to send me a draft of the resolution that they have already prepared, so I could turn it over to the chair's office. And they, today, I don't have it as of yet. So soon as I get it, or whoever gets it first, I'll be happy to share.
And I've seen something earlier in the year, and I gave them my input on, and what most of my conversation was on recognizing transition and that things don't happen overnight. It's okay to have aspirational thoughts, but how do we get there and at what cost? And I just wanted that, those sensitivities to be in place, and really haven't seen an updated version of it since we had those conversations. So I welcome that. I'd like to bring it back here. We have it planned, I think, on one of our workshops to talk about this very issue.
So we can, we can prepare the resolution. I would, I would rather ask the staff prepare that and not someone else, and put the flavor of Pinellas County on it. And two, then I'll, I'll discuss with Hank what you, what he just talked about, of what he would need to put us in the best position to go after federal funds. And so we'll, we'll talk about those things, bring those back. But as you can see, to kind of wrap this up, you know, I think that was Hank's last slide, but this is, these are, this is a significant, you know, policy shift and change. But it, but it's very thoughtful in terms of creating a direction on how we make decisions regarding when is the right timing to be most, have the environmental impact, but also do so cost-effectively. And, and both of those are possible, you know? But that, I think everybody's laid out that 10-year horizon. That doesn't mean that we're waiting 10 years. That means we're starting today with, but having an outlook of 10 years, which is, you know, probably the most you can do in ever-changing and evolving market. But I think we have a, one of the new electric vehicles that is parked outside, that following the meeting, you'll be able to tour, see, sit in. And so you can, you can tour that at the end. But that concludes our staff report regarding this, and, because we've got some more topics to discuss.
Okay. Anything else on this? Okay. Thank you, Hank. Feel, feel better.
Thank you.
All right, Barry, next.
Okay, next up is Economic Development. I'm going to ask Kevin Knutson to come up, and he will provide an updated report on this.
Morning, Chair, Vice Chair, and Commissioners. Appreciate your time this morning. I do have a presentation. Hopefully they'll get that loaded up.
Put your mic up.
Sorry about that, I'm hard to hear. I have a presentation that I'm asking the crew in the back to load up for me, and we'll get that started. But I wanted to give you a little background on the project that we've been going through over the past few months. Back in February, we set out to learn from our partners what was working well within the county in economic development, and where there were opportunities for improvement. And we got a lot of great feedback, and we started to understand that there was a significant disconnect between our organization and our partners around the county, that we weren't really speaking with one voice, and that there was not good communication between us and them. So the first thing we did is we launched a program to bring 22 different stakeholders to the table to talk about what the specific issues were and to look for a way to improve that. This included mayors, economic development professionals, people who work in chambers, some folks who are CEOs of local companies. We brought them all together, and we used an organization called Langley Economics. Now, Michael Langley, the principal, who did all this work, also worked for the Tampa Bay Partnership. He knows the area very well, understands the dynamics of the region. And so he was good to help us have that conversation. He interviewed each one of the people individually, and then led us through a group discussion about what those issues are and how we could actually make a different type of approach to economic development within the county. We used the input from that group to inform how we put our director profile together to replace Mike Middel, who retired back in April. And so we wanted to make sure that when we hired somebody, it wasn't just to replace who we had, but rather to hire somebody who is going to be the face of our future and the way that we wanted to do business as we're going along. And then we've developed a work plan based on those recommendations to move forward, and that's something that'll go into a little bit more detail at the end of the presentation. But first, I wanted to talk to you about what we learned through that process. I think the most important thing was, is that the collaboration and communication between us and our partners within the county needed some work. There was a lot of concern that deals were coming in that nobody was aware of, that folks didn't hear about things until after the fact. There was some concern from certain parts of the county that maybe we were preferring certain cities or certain locations within the county, which wasn't true, but it looked that way because of the way we conducted business. And so what we wanted to do was make sure we understood how we got to that point, that those beliefs were in place. The second thing, and I think this is the most important, is that there was consensus among the group, and it was pretty much universal, that the county should take the lead on pulling all this together and figuring out what the future of economic development within the county looks like. They were looking for leadership in this area. They wanted us to step up and, and make some decisions and bring everybody to the table. There was also a strong desire to make sure that we included industry voices in this, that we talked to our partners in the private industry, in manufacturing, in commercial areas, to make sure that we were taking their needs into account as we move forward. And that once we do that, that organization or the way we structure that becomes a single voice for the county in dealing with regional issues. So we have partners with Hillsborough County, we have partners in Pasco and other areas that are all coming to the table together to come up with a regional approach, and we want to speak with one voice from the county. Yes, sir?
Yeah, I just want you to know, this morning, I was at a 7:30 Palm Harbor Chamber meeting, and you had two folks there from Economic Development. They did a great job presenting the nuance about what they're up to, what they're doing, and being present at, at their chamber for a period of time for any appointments that are needed to, to talk about the, some of the programs that we had. So I really, that was great. The other piece to that, I think, could be that those same chambers have boards of director meetings, that if we want to get input from those chambers, I mean, I know you've gotten some in the past, but I'm talking about on an ongoing basis, to be able to be, we have, what they have community parts of the meeting where, you know, if those boards are thinking strategically and would like to have thoughts given to it, those would be great places to get those, those ideas and the thought processes that are going on among the leaders of that chamber, for instance. And each of these chambers have that. They're all active in different levels. But this was a really good meeting. They talked a little bit about the SBE program and, and the opportunities that are there, some grant opportunities, but also some opportunities through larger contractors that might be able to have them piggyback. So it was great stuff to have them there early in the morning and did a really nice job on the presentation. So more of that. But I think we can get more input, too, from, from that group.
Absolutely. And you're seeing the results of us looking at this feedback and acting already. We're not going to wait until we implement our work plan. We've already changed the way that we interact with our partners. We're much more in the community than we were before. We used to bring people to us to communicate, and instead, we're going out to them. And instead of telling them what we're doing, we're asking them questions. We're partnering with them in ways that in the past, where we were much more information-based, where we were disseminating things, now we're much more in a questioning phase, you know? How can we be of assistance? What are your issues? What's going on in your community? I visited Treasure Island, for instance, with Cynthia one day, and we actually walked around all their commercial areas to see exactly what was going on. And that was the first time that I think that we've had a meeting like that directly with a city in a long time. We're good with our, our manufacturers and our businesses. We visit on a regular basis. But how do we connect those, that information we pull from there with the folks who are delivering services and who have needs in their community? And that's where we're really emphasizing.
Yeah, I think it's really great. And, and one of the other pieces to this is our fast-changing development review services recommendations and building department recommendations, because they are, I mean, to me, that's where economic, that's a real big piece of that economic development, kind of grassroots, and if we're not doing that well. So I'm really glad that that's moving in parallel to these efforts.
That's key.
It's on, but I'm not hearing you. Get closer.
That's key in terms of having us aligned with the, our municipal partners, especially in the larger cities where they have economic development people, to work through kind of issue resolution and identifying as, as people are expanding. It's not necessarily about incentives. Incentives are one key piece. It's workforce, 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 and, and getting through development processes. Those are, those are absolutely key, and that's an area where we have a lot of room for improvement. But, you know, we're starting that now.
Yeah, cities, chambers, cities, chambers. They have different perspectives, but they work very closely, so.
You're absolutely right.
Great stuff so far.
And we're learning a lot through this process. I mean, our folks are out there bringing intelligence back to the table, that we can make changes and, and react to what's going on in the community much better. And I'm glad Barry brought up the workforce part. That was something where our partners are the strongest role in that, Career Source and AM Skills and the other people that we deal with, the universities, the colleges, they provide the services. But we're the ones who know what the needs are, and we've got to make that connection. We have to be at the table, linking the resources to the folks who actually need support. And so we're going to be making a much more focused effort within our department. We're going to put resources towards that, and we're going to make sure that we're the convener, we're the facilitator of those discussions, so that those resources get to the places where they need to go.
Yeah. Go ahead.
So the upshot of all this is that we're very close to being able to make an offer on the new Economic Development Director. We've gone through a couple of dozen interviews over the past couple of weeks. It's been quite intensive, but very thoughtful and, and trying to get a lot of different input. For instance, last Wednesday, we had all of the candidates come out to Economic Development and have some time with our Industry Council and with staff, so they could get to meet them and provide us with some feedback. Barry and I used a small committee of local residents who are in roles in municipalities, in economic development, in nonprofits, and in workforce development to help us interview the folks and get their perspectives on what they were seeing and give us some feedback about those folks. So it's taken a while, but we've tried to be very conscious to make sure that we make a really good decision in this process. And so I believe that by next week, we'll be able to make an announcement and get back to you all. And I'm very excited about it, because it will mean that I get to work with someone who's going to take us to that.
We'll give him a different hat after he gets done with this one, but.
That's what I'm afraid of. He should be, too.
There's always something interesting going on, isn't there?
He's done a great job with us.
The other thing that that person's going to do, though, is they're going to lead a, an effort to create a steering committee of, of people from the community to help us determine what governance looks like for economic development within the county and help build that next-generation structure that everyone can connect to and be part of. So we're making incremental changes to the way we do business to improve that. But at the end of the day, we need to have some sort of coming together where we all agree on what that structure looks like. And so we will be coming to each one of you to ask for your advice on who might be someone that we should approach to be on that committee. We want to get that committee stood up early in the next fiscal year and have them do that work over the next several quarters, so that we can come back and make a significant change afterwards. And that's all I wanted to talk about today, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions? Well, I'm, I'm really super excited about it. I don't, I don't really think we can be a regional player in economic development other than words unless we figure out exactly what our community wants and needs and, and that we're ready to really go out and bring the right people in, companies in, and match our community and our skill sets and, and all of that. And I, you know, I think having that piece, I mentioned it last week, and I certainly wasn't trying to be flippant at all about it. I, you know, I really think it's that, that dating matchup, so to speak, between what our companies are desperately needing and the skill sets that we either have or that we need to develop to, I'm not quite sure, or if it's just a communication thing, or it's both. But we, we need to be at the ready to provide that match to our part. Now, there are businesses out there that do that, too, right?
Absolutely.
That match skill sets with jobs. But our part can be complementary with those. And I, and that may be something else we want to do, is, is talk to some of that industry to find out how we can complement their efforts. I mean, we certainly don't want to take over for their efforts, but we could maybe be a, an improved or better partner in making, in making those matches. And I, that's what I was talking about really, when we were really talking about the rental assistance program and folks that are struggling right now to find, make a career change or, or whatever, how do we help them? We could provide some assistance, perhaps in that arena, to get them ready to go, so they don't really have to come back asking for rental assistance at some point. So I think we can work together and be, and be a good business partner with that private sector. So it's a really big deal right now. You know it. We've got people looking for work, and we've got people that are desperately looking to find talent. And so, anyway, enough of that. Thank you. Any other comments or?
Yes.
Commissioner Justice.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think that, that last line about identifying the purpose and the goals, that conversation is going to be probably the most important thing that happens.
Agreed.
As you have all these partners, and when you, especially probably is economic development more than any other topic, that, yeah, I want to be, I want to be a partner, I want to be part of the team, as long as my area gets taken care of first. And so having that, fighting through that, that first block of mentality is going to be the biggest challenge. And, and we have a couple of hotspots in Pinellas. And are we, are we going where the pump is hot and just piling on, or are we trying to spread the wealth into some of the areas where we need the economic development, where it might take a little bit more work, a little bit more effort, and a little bit more partnership? So those early conversations are going to be so key.
So some good news in that area. The Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council is, is conducting a regional SEDS. So it's a community economic development study. And they're going to try and determine on a regional basis what our strengths are and what our assets are. To complement that, they're also using CARES funding to do an industry cluster analysis just for Pinellas County. So we'll be able to extract data from the SEDS that allows us to look deeper into what we're doing and allows us to do a strategic plan that's really focused on the county, which we really haven't had in the past.
Anything else? All right, thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time. Thanks for all your work over at Economic Development, wearing all those different hats.
It's been an absolute pleasure. It's a great team over there.
Yeah, enjoy our conversations. Barry?
Okay, last item is agenda review.
Can we take a quick break?
Yeah. Let's.
Before we start, I don't want to miss.
Yeah, let's start back in about five minutes or so, 10 minutes.
I just don't want to miss anything. Thank you.
Doing one property. Anyway, I just wanted to call your attention to that as one of the reasons that I asked for that workshop later on. Thank you.
Thanks. Yeah, Commissioner Gerard.
It seems like we used to get cumulative reports every once in a while, like every quarter, about annexations and how, but we haven't gotten one in a very long time.
Your memory is better than mine. I can't remember when we did last get it. It could've been last, it could've been last meeting or a year ago. I really, could we see?
Maybe we need to get something like that year by year if we could get.
Della, have we ever pulled like reports like that together?
Yeah, well, let's see what we have and you can bring it back quarterly or every, you know, twice a year or something.
Could've been four years ago for that matter.
It's a good idea. It's a good idea to look at trends and see what's.
Okay, we'll pull, we'll put together some reports. Item nine is a ranking of firms. So this is, it's actually a continuation contract. This is for our rapid rehousing program. It was big, but it's the same provider.
I'm sorry, Barry, where were you on that?
That was item nine.
Oh, nine, I'm sorry. Yeah. Okay.
Item number 10 is engineering services, front close roadway and stormwater improvements, $848,000. I'm sorry, 10.
Barry, do you, where is that in the plan, in our, in our penny plan? Do you know the construction for that? Where are we estimating it to be?
It's not close.
It's in this penny, though?
Up and up.
That's what I've been told. That's what I've been telling.
That's what I recall.
So, yeah. Thank you.
Okay. Item 11 is a word of a bid for recycling services. This is our recycling drop-off center locations and our beach park recycling locations, 16-month contract, $1.6 million. Item number 12 is a warrant of bid to three firms. This is for pumps, parts, repairs. Each one has an upside and not to exceed a different amount for each one, totaling $28 million, but this is all for, out at our utilities department.
Wow, lots of parts.
Lots, lots of parts.
Lots of cars, lots of buildings, and I guess lots of parks. 28 million over five years.
28 million over five years. It's an upset limit and so that's.
My God. Okay, thanks, Barry.
And speaking of that, item 13, we're back to BTS and what we discussed last time. But Jeff is here and I'd just ask him to come forward. He provided us some additional information in your packet regarding the expenditures of that contract, but he can just kind of walk through with it to make sure you're comfortable.
Hi, Jeff.
Hey, good morning.
Jeff, glad you're here with us today.
Thank you. So I did put together a little bit of background information as a result of the last conversation last week on this item. Starting out with a little bit of history, we've been partnered with Cisco for more than 15 years, but I've captured about 15 years' worth of history here. You know, in 2005 timeframe, we were using Cisco as a strategic partner for our network and buying mainly network switches and routers, which is the backbone of our network, runs everything that makes all of our technology connect to each other. And then not long after that, we began also using Cisco as a provider for firewall technology. Around 2008 through 2012, we had growth in the network around voice-over-IP and we brought in wireless, the technology now that we all use, but back then it was fairly new. Through 2012 and 2015, we started to actually shift our server install base to Cisco. And these are architectural shifts. Although the decisions are made at that time, the actual transition takes many years. You don't just switch all your servers out in one year. You actually, typically it's about a five to seven-year total timeframe to switch a technology. So we began shifting to Cisco servers in that timeframe. And that was also the timeframe where wireless grew exponentially. We ended up installing over 1,000 access points and we cover now over 2 million square feet of county office space with wireless connectivity. And then since that time, you're really seeing the execution of some of those architectural shifts and that consolidation happening. So through the next five to seven years, a lot of those decisions will continue to fruition. So consolidation is happening, you know, with several different technologies. And then the last one that's on the horizon is our work. All of our phones don't have phone lines anymore. We use the network today. But what we are looking at is that next evolution and we are targeting Cisco as a provider for that as well. It would be a very hybrid system, not like anything we own today, but that is on the horizon and that's built into our planning around Real quick snapshot, we currently maintain about 9.3, just over $9.3 million of Cisco assets. And that's, that's asset, assets that are of a volume enough to be on the books as fixed assets. There's additional Cisco equipment that falls below that threshold, but that gives you an idea of the install base around Cisco, around the county. The support costs for that $9.3 million worth of Cisco equipment, you have a support cost with Cisco, we pay every year. 2022's proposed is about $700,000 for our maintenance costs. And this is very dependent on how much equipment you own and your discount that you get from your provider. So your, if you own more equipment, this, this goes up. So this, that's why you see the trend there. As we've acquired more and more Cisco equipment, it increases year over year. The discount currently in this proposed contract is 24% off of the MSRP cost for support.
Hold on one second. Just want to make sure. Karen, are you still with us? Karen Seal, Commissioner.
Yes, I am.
Okay, I just want to make sure because I know you had some questions in this last time, so I just wanted to make sure you were, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay. So this next slide, I kind of captured the contract history. You can see the previous contracts as it relates to this contract. I think there was some, you know, discussion around going from 11.8 million in the previous five years to 24 and a half million for the next five years. I did want to show that. You can see there in the orange was the unspent portion of the previous contracts and also you can see the discounts. And I think this is an important, this is an important area. Why do we, why do we establish five-year contracts? Well, first off, it's administratively better to have a contract to procure from. But in addition to that, when we, when we do these longer-term contracts, we get much better discounts. And if you look at our previous contract, our discounts were 23% off of support and 43% off of the equipment. This proposed contract is 24% off of support, 52% off of network equipment and 65% off of servers. So significantly better discounts by having a larger contract as well.
Just a question. This is really a, like an ABC question. You know, we think of technology improvements and therefore costs savings and, but I, every time I see any technology contracts, they're going through the roof. So maybe you could just speak kind of in general to that, you know?
Yeah, there are areas of technology that are absolutely getting cheaper. You know, cost of PCs have come down over the years, cost of peripherals. There are other areas that are getting, well, actually, cost of storage and those technologies. There are areas where it is getting more expensive and that's usually in the areas where you're doing next gen, next generation or next evolution of a technology. So an example, there would be firewalls today are tremendously more expensive than firewalls of 10 years ago because they, they have to do so much to secure an enterprise like ours. So it's a little bit of a give and take, but specifically around the growth here, I'm going to talk about that. I think I want to make sure we talk through what's changing in this contract that adds to that growth. It's not just cost of equipment.
Is it, is the, is it the expense also associated with people that are in this industry that drive costs? I mean, I just see, it seems like they're, you know, BTS-type folks or ITS-type are hard to find and they're, is that driving the cost? What, I mean, what?
This is purely just a contract to buy equipment.
I understand, but they're, but it's a market-driven, so.
Oh, it's possible. I, I think, well, actually, let me jump to.
Okay, go ahead.
A growth slide. I think it's important. There's two additions to this contract that weren't in previous versions of the five-year contracts. The first one is the telephone system and that's a pretty big investment, 5.3 million. And that is out of our capital improvement plan and been planned for, for 10 years. The second piece is a training and professional services piece of this contract, which is 3.3 million. And this is intended to be used on an as-needed basis when we need to augment our staff in a way, maybe we have multiple vacancies and we can't deliver on our services. We would leverage this professional services piece of this contract. And that would be paid through our payroll lapse because we'd have vacancies that would be, we'd be augmenting. Or potentially some special projects would fund augmentation as well. So we've built that into this contract. So what that looks like is, I tried to put a visual together. If you take the, the addition of training and professional services, which is 3.3 plus the 5.3 for the telephone system, almost 9 million of what you're seeing in the increase are those two items. The rest is, is what we would consider normal growth and investment. So I'm hoping that puts some perspective to why. And also, I tried to come up with analogy and it's probably bad timing that you just had a fleet discussion around that, but I was trying to come up with an analogy of if, if you had a fleet of 1,000 vehicles and some were Ford and some were Chevy and Toyota and Honda and you consolidated, it makes sense, right? Because you have less parts and you have less, your mechanics are more familiar with that one provider. Well, that's what's happening here. We're consolidating with Cisco, which has all those same efficiencies. We have less, different types of equipment to support. Our expertise is greater. And it makes, in the analogy of the vehicles, it would make the Ford contract, if that was who you were consolidating, look larger. It makes the Cisco look larger, but it's really just buying more equipment that you would have bought with other providers on this contract. So it's, it's not, it's not that the increase of the equipment is increasing, which is what we just discussed.
Yes, Commissioner Justice.
Thank you. And I think that was the answer we were looking for last week of, of the dollar amount for the entire programming versus the one thing. So that, I think if we could've gotten there last week, we might've been able to get through it last week.
Yeah, I apologize.
No, no, it, it, it's, it's a big number and a lot of stuff in there.
Absolutely. And then the last slide is just a summary of our line items in our budget that would be going against this contract. And of course, FY '22, we do have $5 million identified as line items that would be going against this contract for execution. And then the future years, again, this is, this is a not-to-exceed-purchase contract. We still need to have the budget to execute it. So those future years, we, this is our projections and that's how we came to the $24 million. We still have to have those budget dollars to execute and actually spend those dollars. So we're not appropriating them by approving this contract. We're just having a contract with the ability to spend those dollars. So. And that's the last slide. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. And obviously BTS has vetted all, you know, all the constitutionals that were there. They've gone through all of this as well, all of this. I know the two commissioners were on there as well, so. Just going to, Commissioner Seal, did you have any questions? I'm, I'm not seeing you, so I just want to make sure I'm not missing you.
That's really kind of you. I guess I still want to know if the telephone is entirely necessary.
Well, yes, I mean, absolutely necessary. What it will look like is still undetermined, but we do have 6,000 physical phones and another 2,000 phones that operate various pieces of equipment. Let's just say like an elevator emergency phone or a, or a conference phone or many other phone lines. But yes, we do have to support all the needs of the county from, from every BTS board member's needs from a voice perspective. But we're really excited about the opportunity to explore the next generation of phones, which will not look like today's generation of phones. We're going to be absolutely exploring a hybrid solution, which will take into account being able to make calls directly from your computer using, you know, various softwares, potentially Teams, being able to make a call from your phone that's not your cellphone. It's, you know, all those really advanced things. We also have to support the call centers and we need to support emergency communications during an emergency and we need to support the sheriff, you know, for a survivability perspective. So we are taking all those requirements into account when we look to select the next voice system. But it, but it is necessary. We still do have a lot of demands for voice. It just will look different.
Okay, any other questions?
I also, just real quick on that $5 million for voices, is that's a five-year number. So that's the purchase of the system and the support for five years. So that's, and the purchase comes out of CIP and the support would come out of our BTS operating budget.
Do we have that in our packet, package?
Yes, that was attached to the agenda item.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay.
All right.
I think we're good. Thank you, Jeff. Appreciate it. Thanks.
Item number 14 is an MSTU for Terra Verde. This is to repair some playground equipment. Total, total cost $25,000. Terra Verde Community Station will pay the remaining $5,000. Item number 15 is a Palm Harbor Historic Society constructing a native plant and living landscape with interpretive signing for $20,000. Item number 16 is a MSTU for Palm Harbor Chamber of Commerce Downtown Palm Harbor Beautification and Street Escape Program for $19,900. And item 17 is an MSTU for the police, or Pinellas Police Athletically Video Surveillance for the Leman Sports Complex and the Landing Clubhouse, the amount $11,500. So again, your, your assistants have been out working to kind of round up what the needs of the community, like, so these, these are the ones that they've reviewed and recommend for your approval. Item number 18 is a, an agreement with the medical examiner, $6.7 million. Item 19 is funding agreement with Gulf Coast Legal. This, the majority of this, actually 228,000 of the 390,000 comes from court fees, 162,000 from the general fund. Item number 20 is a grant award from U.S. Department of Health and Human Services for assisted outpatient treatment services for individuals with serious mental illness. This is a four-year award of four point, just over $4 million. There's no match or cost-sharing requirement. Item number 21 is your annual human services social action, social action funding grant recommendations. So this is a competitive online grant process. This is for our fiscal year '22. They had 54 applications that were received. You have a review committee that's comprised of a diverse group of individuals from community stakeholders that come together and make the recommendations. And they're making a recommendation for 18 agencies for the amount that is allocated per the budget of just over $1.5 million.
Question?
Yeah, go ahead, Commissioner.
And forgive me if I'm mixing up different programs, but is this the funding item that we've been receiving so much information from Turning Point?
I believe so, yes. Is this the? Go ahead up to the mic.
Hi, Karen Yatcham, Human Services Director. Regarding Turning Point, they were awarded $30,000 from social action funding. The 120,000 was for mustard seed. The communication that you're receiving is really about a bid that occurred in January of this year regarding shelter beds.
Okay. And on, on the shelter bed, are we funding overall in the county at the same level? They were talking about a substantial, almost $250,000, $260,000 reduction in funding.
So there was a decision made last year. The total budget for that line item is around $660,000. Previously, it was $250,000 for street outreach and $400,000 for shelter beds. So to make sure that the services could be delivered upfront, additional VI SPIT ads could be done for coordinated entry, the shift was made to increase street outreach to 400,000 and shelter bed capacity to 250, resulting in the new bid in January for two agencies to bid for those beds.
So the actual, the outreach and all of that is important. Is that connecting them with Rapid Housing Services?
Yes. So the street outreach would be doing the initial assessment. So the VI SPIT ad, which places them on the coordinated entry list for rapid rehousing. In addition, they do secure them into safe shelter. So in the various shelters in the community.
All right. That's what I want to make sure is that it's great to outreach and it's great to identify and it's great to have all the data, but if we didn't get them a bed, then, you know, it, it reminds me of the old saying in Tallahassee about weighing the pig every day doesn't make it any fatter. So.
I'm so glad you brought that one up.
It was, it's about spending money to test and analyze and identify, but not actually providing the services. And that's, you know, that's what I want to make sure that we're still getting at the end of the day. And I know that it's a different type of service, but I don't want to stop, be able to identify everybody and spend that money without actually being able to get the end service to them. That's what I.
Yeah, there was, oh, sorry.
Commissioner Gerard.
Well, yeah, just to follow up on what Commissioner Justice was saying, I think, I appreciate the front-end services, but I don't know where you put these people, particularly for the chronic inebriates, if you don't have shelter beds. And, you know, what we're doing is cutting shelter beds. We're not just pumping up the front end. And Turning Point is the only chronic inebriate center, aside from the jail, that we have in Pinellas County. And I'm sure, well, based on the cost, the incredibly low cost of shelter, let me tell you, I've run shelters, whatever it was they were charging was really low, is way, way cheaper than the jail. And I'm sure the sheriff would be glad to tell us that. So I, I have concerns about, I understand the whole national shift to rapid rehousing and housing first and all that, but there's a certain part of the population that is not going to be stable in an apartment by themselves. And I don't know who's, because they have no income, they have an alcohol or drug problem and maybe mental health problems as well. And I, I don't know how they stay in housing like that. To me, it's cheaper to let them bounce in and out of shelter. Yeah, I, I don't, you know, I've always had some issues about housing first as a total strategy because I always think there's, there are people left over from that. You know, like we had, well, never mind. I could go on and on, as you know.
Commissioner Flowers.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to share, I serve on the COC Committee, formerly the Homeless Coalition Leadership. And we received some additional funding through HUD and just had our ranking, our rank and review committee, we just met and ranked the various applications. And we were able to provide some additional funding in the area of beds for individuals. So it helps in the area that this is now lacking because all of us, I think, got the emails from West Care about meeting with them. So this, so the additional dollars that we received, as a matter of fact, we just put, we put out another RFP because we had some additional dollars for DV, domestic violence-type shelters. So that'll be going out. So we, we were able to have some additional dollars that will provide some beds for persons. We even talked about the fact that the homeless count didn't go quite the way it normally goes because of COVID, but we are planning to have the regular, you know, if things permit, to have a, a regular function of the homeless count so that we get a better picture and a better idea of the services that will be needed for transitioning people into those beds for the inebriate. And then working with them to hopefully move them to transitional or permanent housing. So it's not the same. I understand that, but just sharing that that's a component that can hopefully fill some of the gap from, from losing some of those beds. And I thought what I also read was, it was Directions that got some additional funding because I thought that was part of their concern too in the email. I haven't met with their staff yet. We have a date coming up, but I thought part of what their contention was, was that Directions was funded and they were decreased in funding. They still got some beds funded, not just as many as previously.
Yes. So Directions for Living was awarded the street outreach contract and there were two agencies that did, that completed the bid for shelter beds. One was HEP in Northern Pinellas and then Turning Point in the south.
Commissioner Gerard, you have?
Well, and, yeah, HEP is serving a totally different population. They have some pretty high standards for who they allow to stay there. And chronic inebriates do not stay at HEP for, once they've been identified as chronic inebriates. I wanted to ask, in your COC deliberations, was there any money specifically going to Turning Point or is it just for shelter beds in general?
Oh, Lord, I keep forgetting to push that button. Not specifically to Turning Point, if my memory serves me correctly. I will take a quick look while, while you guys are talking on my email.
You can tell me later.
Okay. But yeah, not specifically for Turning Point, if, if my memory serves me correctly. Not specifically for them, but for other agencies, but not specifically.
Well, and Turning Point, like I said, is a unique service. And I think whether you appreciate addiction or not, they serve, they provide a service that nobody else does in this community and they've struggled for years and years. And that's a fairly significant cut that they're taking and a fairly significant reduction in services that they're going to be able to provide. So, and as long as we don't have an addiction-receiving facility, they're kind of in.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Scraper afterwards. Okay, item number 22 is an agreement with the sheriff for our environmental lands deputies. Item number 23 is Medicaid Public Emergency Management Transportation Letter of Agreement. This allows us to do our Medicaid managed assistance billing. Item number 24 is the Annual Certificate for Solid Waste Collection in Leman, $16 per month. Item 25 is the First Amendment with PLC Construction. This is our design build of the Dunn Water Recreation Facility. You had previously amended for Phase 1. This is, we'll initiate Phase 2, which is the construction, providing filtration and disinfection improvements. Item number 26 is the Third Amendment Emery and Understanding with Star Tech Enterprises and the Industrial Development Authority, which is our economic development authority.
And Barry, I assume we have had no more interest or, on that property. I mean, we haven't been out officially. I know we haven't been out officially looking, but.
Yeah, not that, Kevin, is there, we haven't discussed that, and at least I haven't discussed that in some time in terms of direction.
Just to clarify, which property are we talking about?
The Star Tech.
You mean the Star Center?
Star Center, yeah.
Star Tech is the Tampa Bay Innovation Center, I just want to be clear about. We're actually in the middle of doing a master plan for that facility. It's over 90% booked right now, and we do have interest from other companies, and we think that there's a lot of opportunity for growth there.
But not interested purchasing from us?
No, but we haven't gone to market with it yet either, so.
Yeah. I mean, it's, you know, some periodic review of that would be, you know, I don't mean every six months do that, but, you know, those opportunities change.
Absolutely. And I think that the investments that we've been making in it, the improvements we've been making and what we're planning on doing will make it a much more valuable asset.
Yeah. And that, yeah, we're going to, Star Tech's a different.
This is, yeah, this is the business incubator, okay? And so we still have funding issues, et cetera, and stuff that they're working on and working through on that, but there's some exciting announcements coming up.
This renewal is just to update the contract. It's for one year, so we have to renew it every year. We will be going to an operating agreement if and when the center is built, and that will be a different type of agreement in 2023.
So are we going to be able to get an update, a generic kind of, without specifics, general update on some of the goings-on that we've heard about this week?
Yes. The TBIC Executive Director and Board Chair is setting up individual meetings with each of you to tell you about what is going on. Like Barry alluded to, there's some very exciting news that we have. It's still confidential at this point, but I think probably by October, mid-October, early November, we'll be able to be public with it.
Okay. Thank you.
Item number 27 is an amendment to the Emergency Medical Services Life Support First Responder Agreements with five municipalities and two independent fire districts. Those new authority-funded units are listed below in your packet. Item number 28 is, you actually saw this before, this multifamily housing revenue bonds for rental housing, they, because of some improvements to the project, the developers requested an increase in the bond amount. Item number 29 is the Fiscal Year '22 Leuven Community Redevelopment Area Work Plan. Proposed work plan includes 2.75 million of tax increment financing for projects. And then item 30 is their actual community trust budget, which includes staff costs, so a total of 3.2 million. Item 31.
Item 31 is a request from the tax collector that you all receive pretty much every year to extend the tax rolls so that he can send out the tax bills in a timely manner, given the fact that the value adjustment board process is not expected to be concluded in a timely manner. And you would be adopting a resolution to that effect. And under item number 32, this is the placeholder for update on redistricting. The board did have its first meeting last night. I watched part of it virtually. Commissioner Eggers, I know that you were in attendance there, so I know that they did take care of much of the organizational-type functions of the board, so.
I think they picked their chair and their vice chair and had some good discussion about that philosophically and got to a place what they were comfortable with, and they moved together to get their, the people. And I think they had a pretty robust discussion on different things, including Sunshine, which we've all had. We've all had that, so. But it was, it was good meeting. Go ahead.
So Brian Lowack and Jeffrey Youngman, they've served before, but with, with having a new Budget Director coming in, we switched that over to be Chris Moore, to be the representative for us.
Barry, I know it's not probably the place to have the conversation, but, you know, I just, I haven't really dug into a whole lot of the Library Cooperative Board. I mean, it just operates, but there's been a couple of things that have, you know, come to my attention from the two county libraries that, they're in a little different position than some of the city libraries, and some of the decisions that were made and how they're made affect them, and they end up being a two-vote on issues that are, that cities feel one way about it and can protect the count, those libraries from some cost. And they're just in a little different place. So maybe at some point we can just go through maybe some of the mechanics.
Sure, we could. Well, you know, we could, Brian would probably be the better. I mean, Bill's still here, but, you know, we'll get that on a work session and, you know, and just have him give you a little update.
I don't think it's a big deal, but it is, it ain't a big deal overall, but.
There's several issues with, we've got some that are independent and, yeah, there's, I haven't really dug into it that much, but.
No, and I'm not trying to break it.
There's a few issues that have come up over the past couple of years.
Yeah. Well, the fact that we took those, that step several years ago on the facilities that we own and taking care of the.
Right.
That was a big deal for them as compared to a lot of facilities that are within cities that helped them tremendously. So anyway, there's maybe some other things that we need to look at, but, okay, not today. Go ahead.
And then you have appointments to the Youth Advisory Board. Then the last item, only public hearing, is setting the militerates, and so that'll be our first discussion on our 2022 budget.
And I'm sure our Budget Director will be at the ready for that one conversation that we had last time with those three different options and what that rollback would look like and all that stuff, because I think that, you know, that's the rub for me a little bit, so I just want to make sure we have that, we can have the discussion again.
We're going to have it lined up, we'll have that lined up. You can have that discussion, you can decide that. I'll just, and I'll say it next week, but I'll say it right now, the good part is, we're having a discussion about how much we roll back the property tax rate, which is a pretty good discussion while we're putting more money into infrastructure.
Yeah, I'm very excited about that. Could be more excited, but I'm excited about that. You got to go. Anything else before we wrap up? Okay, this meeting's adjourned.